Everyone in attendance in person. I am calling this meeting to order. It is six o'clock. We need to establish the agenda.
I move, we establish the agenda as published.
Second. All in favor of establishing the agenda as published, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That passes by both of five to zero. We are ready to do some serious recognition.
It looks like some serious recognition and celebration. We are getting tonight to celebrate some of our Mercer Island High School students who have had some great accomplishments during the past couple of months. So tonight, we're going to start with recognizing an individual athlete for her athletic success at a state championship. We're also going to recognize the student staff of the Islander newspaper and also the MIHS yearbook for their state award-winning success. So first up, we have here with us tonight senior gymnast Rachel Refmeyer. Rachel, why don't you come up to the podium? And I'm going to brag on you a little bit here. Rachel competed at the 3A state championship several weeks ago. She placed sixth on the bars, seventh on beam, and eighth in the all-around. Her coach unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but she sent a message. She said, she had this to say about Rachel's performance at the state championship. Rachel has been an incredible addition to our team. She's always ready to work hard and encourage others to as well. Rachel is a great inspiration on the team, continually welcoming and friendly with everyone on the team. This was seen clearly from her being nominated as one of our captains in both her junior and senior years. Rachel has also been selected for the team who will represent Washington State in the upcoming Senior Nationals Invitational, which is a huge achievement and honor for her. She has grown, she has shown great leadership and work ethic all four years on the team and will be very missed. We can't wait to see how she continues to excel in the years to come. Congratulations, Rachel. We wish you much success in the rest of your senior year. And we always have to do a photo op with the board. Get a little bit closer now.
Hey, here we go. Three, two, one. All right. Thank you.
Next up are our journalism award winners. And tonight, we are joined by students from Mr. Chris Twongley's journalism class along with Mr. Greg Smiley's yearbook class, both at MIHS, of course. These students produce the Islander newspaper and the school's annual yearbook. Nine of the students in our journalism class and two students in the yearbook class achieved state awards in a competition against other Washington State students at the 2022 Washington Journalism Education Association State Convention, which I believe was held here at our high school. So that was an exciting event on Saturday. So we do have several of them here. So when I say your name, come on up so we can read you. So our MIHS award winners and the awards day of one are Jordan Belucic, superior for headline writing and copy editing. Nisha Gregory, an excellent in yearbook sports photo. Rose is excellent in editorial writing. In a superior in editorial cartooning. And superior in review writing. Brooks Kasse, an honorable mention in sports action photography. Levin is superior in news writing and state journalist of the year. Sandra Patterson, honorable mention, newspaper feature writing. Honorable mention, newspaper feature photo. Comey, honorable mention, yearbook feature photos. Ashley Warner, honorable mention, sports feature writer. And overall, the Islander website received an excellent rating. And I just saw him walk in the room. So Brooks is here for his honorable mention in sports action photography. Congratulations. Mr. Twongley regretfully cannot be here tonight because he is attending his daughter's graduation from nursing school. So I think you'll all give him a pass, right? According to Chris, this year's group of editors and staff writers has elevated the Islander's quality and variety of coverage, making the Islander a trusted source of news and commentary for the entire community. I love it when I get my edition. Mr. Smiley, who also could not make it tonight, had this to say. Piper Picorni, who is also our yearbook photo editor, won honorable mention in the state competition for her photos of the homecoming assembly and of English classes. Nisha Gregory, our strongest photographer and story writer, won an award of excellence for her photos of boys and girls swimming. We are lucky to have the talent and dedication of both Piper and Nisha this year. The operation of a free press is integral to our democracy. Knowing we have students that are actively taking part in our democracy and learning through working on student publications, why a free press in our country is so important is also very inspiring. I do have an interview next week. A student from the Islander reached out to me and I am looking forward to my final interview with the Islander. And I do, I can also share that one of the very first things I got to do when I came to Mercer Island as superintendent was an interview with the Islander. So beginning and concluding in the same fashion. So congratulations. We're so proud of all of you. Nice job. The photo op thing.
Okay, we're going to switch together. We need to move this way a little bit, to my left, your right a little bit.
There we go.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. Get everyone. Here we go, everyone. Three, two, one. Big smiles. There we go. Thank you.
Just giving them a moment to move around a little bit. Somebody. Whoever covers up. People snap.
Want to grab any of those clips?
And he signed up for it.
Brooks.
Apologize for giving Brooks information. He went down to City Hall.
Well, he was just here.
He's here. He's still here.
Okay.
Okay. Keeping shape for that sports photography. Okay, so we have. We have at least one, we have Molly Harnish on Zoom. And let me just read the blurb. This meeting is a meeting of the board in public. It is not a public meeting that guarantees interaction between members of the public and members of the board. When addressing the board, please limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern. And if desired, provide written documentation to the board secretary. Public comments that name or otherwise identify a district student are not permitted without permission of that student's parent or legal guardian. The board may direct the superintendent to respond at a later date to the issues expressed. Thank you.
Are you ready for me?
Are you ready?
Yes, we are.
Okay, good evening. Hello again. My name is Molly Harnish and I am the teacher librarian at Northwood Elementary School. I'd like to respond to the questions raised at the last board meeting by you, the board members, asking for clarity about the real world impact of these proposed reduction in force cuts to the elementary librarian positions, which you will be voting on later this evening. The proposed RIF is a reduction of point two, which essentially means cutting our library positions by one day a week and making us part-time employees. I currently teach five to six classroom sections per day for 35 minutes each. I teach 18 regular ed classrooms, kindergarten through fifth grade, plus four additional sections of early childhood special education, preschool storytime, and one personalized learning program adaptive library class. This brings me to 23 sections spread out over five days. Now, the schedule proposed by the administrative team at the last meeting mentioned that there would only be 17 sections and that that's just not enough for full-time librarians. But what that does not recognize is that there are five additional sections of special ed library in my program. So these would be cut and our special needs students would not receive the specific library class they need to fit their unique needs. I am also open for recesses 30 to 60 minutes each day with an average of 30 to 40 students choosing to come to the library. With the proposed cuts, I would need to teach classes back to back to back on those four days a week. There would not be enough time in the day for me to have lunch and take my breaks. So I would have to be closed at recess and lunchtimes. This would mean students would not have an alternative recess option other than going outside. There would be no hope of bringing back our successful and very popular Makerspace program, which many of you have seen. We'd have no additional periods for students to check in, check out books, to pick up their books on hold, or to come in and browse books just for pleasure. I also teach all of the mindfulness curriculum lessons to all of the kindergarten, first, and second grade classrooms at Northwood. That was part of what you were able to provide in last year's ESER form. That is nine sections, approximately three and a half hours per week. We know that mindfulness has been a key component of the social emotional learning at Northwood, and there would be no one to take my place. That means mindfulness lessons would end. We currently have one to two hours a day for checking in, shelving books, book ordering, book cataloging, repairing, following up on overdue lost books, pulling books for teachers, pulling books for diversity equity, equity and initiative initiatives, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So with these hours cut, we would have less than an hour a day to do all these administrative tasks above what needs to happen to make the library run smoothly. Without a full-time librarian, people just run in and grab what they need without checking the books out. That basically means the book is now lost forever. So it is imaginable, but the administrative team is thinking with reduced enrollment, we should be able to see 16 to 18 classes in four days. What is missing is there is no administrative time set aside for all the work that happens beyond working with students. Please consider this carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooks, you're up.
Hello, everybody. My name is Brooks Cassai. I'm an MIHS junior and the public relations coordinator for Black Student Union. Today, I'd like to discuss with all of you the aftermath and impact of this past Black History Month celebration on the island. I'm proud of what the MIHS Black Student Union was able to accomplish in February at the high school. And I'd like to thank the MIHS administration for allowing us to take the wheel on school breach responsibilities. There are many highlights starting with our webinar on February 3rd, during which we partnered with local affinity groups to explore the history of redlining and residential covenants in the greater Seattle area. We also partnered with D89's Bridge, our local radio station at the high school, to hold Black Music Matters, a month-long celebration of black musicians on our local radio station, for which a black artist was played from a selection of 300-plus songs once an hour. Toward the end of the month, there was also a day set for international black cuisine to be sold at our school cafeteria yet, and our school band played music from historic black figures. Today, I want to acknowledge the success, I also want to acknowledge the success of the 21-day racial equity challenge, which received a lot of recognition and support from families across the island and on social media. I believe Black History Month this year was more successful than it's ever been before. But that said, this shouldn't be as far as we go. As the PR coordinator for BSU, I facilitated comments and constructive criticism for students and teachers at my school. And while there has been a lot of praise, there has also been complaints about staff and teachers alike. I won't name names for professionality's sake, but the staff community at MIHS has been divided on how to approach Black History Month along with the MI community and the collective. I'm not saying that there hasn't been support, but the level of commitment and initiative to explore the black curriculum has been limited and inconsistent. My personal experience, I've had teachers commit to having us research black figures in history and allow debates in class time. In other classes, there has been almost no mention of Black History Month at all. The sheer amount of social media backlash in lower-grade level schools like IMS, where the curriculum has, where there has been Black History Month curriculum has been even disappointing also. And that's very considering the words that were said. Advertisements for the MIHS BSU events were mostly led by me, the surrounding student clubs, and a few teachers who took it upon themselves to reiterate our announcements on the regular. My point is that while there's been a decent amount accomplished, hurdles were jumped to accomplish all of that. And that shouldn't be how it is. To prevent it, I think our best course of action is to integrate the Black History curriculum across all schools so that we can oversee what is being taught during Black History Month. And we need to support, we need the support of the board and the MI community to do that. I'm not saying we need to give into our concerns and end all of this. I'm saying that we need to get over ourselves and have the conversations that need to happen to ensure that students at our schools are well-informed in these matters, no matter how difficult or uncomfortable these conversations can be. This is the world we're going to enter sooner or later, and we are supposed to be an example of diversity and equity among staff and students. We have been committed, but this is a test of that pledge. And I say we commit now more than ever. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is the end of our public input. So thanks for having the superintendent report. Superintendent Report, Board Policy 1809, Communication Export to the Board.
We have several updates we want to give to the board. Tonight, we're going to start with an instructional coaching update. Jamie, Director Jamie Prescott is here. And I believe there's someone on Zoom as well.
Dana Berger is also going to join us tonight.
And they are going to give the board, I think we did this about the same time last year, an update on the work that our coaches across the system, we like to call them our coaching cadre, have been working on. Jamie, I will turn it over to you.
I'll wait for Andrew to pull up. That is Dana on, I see.
I just voted her.
Hi.
There's Dana.
Hi, Dana.
Hi.
I apologize.
No worries. So instructional coaches in the district have kind of ebbed and flowed for a number of years. And I'm really excited, the past, what is it, four years, five years? We have had the opportunity to have a, an instructional coaching cadre that is led by Dana Berger, a longtime instructional coach at the middle school. And she and the instructional coaches meet and they, they learn together every week. And then they in turn help provide professional learning opportunities for our staff in real time. If you go to the next slide entries. These are our instructional coaches throughout the district. We have one building-based instructional coach at every elementary school. We've got two building-based instructional coaches at the middle school and two at the high school. We also have an inclusionary coach, Chris Cocklin Ray, who works especially with third and fourth grade teachers right now, but with all elementary, really promoting UDL practices, talking about ways to enrich, enhance, and accelerate for students and meet their needs. And we've got instructional technology coaches who were instrumental during our time of remote learning. And they are the tech gurus for the district to work with teachers to help implement different instructional strategies and tools in order to help students. And then we've also got some special education coaches who are able now to push into classrooms and provide real-time support. And then, like I said, we've got Dana Berger. So we have an entire team that is really devoted to improving the learning opportunities for our students. So here, we're not going to go through all of them. And these are, I will tell you, when I pinged the coaches the other day and I said, hey, I need some examples of, of things that you would like to share that you've done recently. My inbox was flooded with, with things that they have done because they really do an incredible amount of work to support individual buildings and the district as a whole. And so linked in here, and I will, I will make this available and send it to you. Linked in here are a variety of different things. So like, for example, Andrew, can you put in a 68 grading for Equity Hub? So this is a resource created by our middle school coaches. Oh, it's just slow. If you go down a couple of slides. So this is where, for the middle school teachers, all of the resources about their rating for equity work, their pilots, their process, studies, research, et cetera. All these different resources are housed here in this hub. And this was 100% generated by our instructional coaches. If you go back, so this is available to our students. It's not, you know, you don't see any fancy logos, like this is some external thing. This is really our, our instructional coaches providing this for staff.
Good. To the original. I'm proud of you.
If you look at like the K5 tech training. So this would be something from our instructional, instructional technology coaches. At the elementary level, we have two. We've got Kara Millstaff and Julie Hoben. And this is something where at the start of the year, we have what we call Technology Integration Day. And so they, they plan with myself, Andrew Reeves, and the other ITCs from around the district, for an entire day of training for the teachers. And so this is just a slide of some of the things they, they go through. And Andrew, you can pick a couple of different slides. But you can see that they are the ones who really make sure that our teachers have access to the supports and resources they need to meet student needs. They are experts in their field. They do tutorials. So if you've ever gone in, if you're an elementary parent, you've ever gone in, they've got a parent tech website help. And so most elementary teachers will put that in their signature line so that parents have access to that in case they've got questions. So this is just a quick snapshot there. If you click through these, you know, I, I thought it was really fun to just go through them and see all the work they're doing. They do everything from setting up and identifying processes for SST meetings to support students and get all the correct players involved, to providing professional development on UDL, inclusive practices, and grading for equity, and finding ways to differentiate for students. So I'm going to turn it over to Dana just to talk about a little bit of the importance as to why we have instructional coaches, but I, I can't sing their praises enough. They do an incredible job supporting our teachers, which in turn directly support our kids.
Thank you, Jamie, and thank you, directors, for allowing us to have this, this time tonight. Dana Berger, I am a longtime Islander middle school teacher turned instructional coach. And now I work part-time leading professional learning for them. And I'm happy to talk with you briefly about this. When you were at Islander Middle School recently, I actually got to begin a chat with Director Glowitz about instructional coaching. And I actually mentioned that I had some resources to share with you. And so instead of sending an email, they're part of this presentation for you, for us tonight and for your future reference. So I'm, I'm really happy for the chance to share a few things with you about our program. But to bring the lens out a little bit, before we zoom in on education, I just want to acknowledge the proven improvement strategy that coaching is. Our top athletes have coaches, teams of coaches, actually. Our executive-level professionals have executive coaches. You may have seen Atul Guande, a top surgeon, wrote a really notable article in The New Yorker about when he realized he had hit a plateau in his surgical career and reached out to a coach who launched him into a new era of learning and growing and a whole new chapter of his career to get him over that plateau. So it's really inspiring to me to talk about this strategy that's used so broadly and how it can impact our students via our teachers. So to bring it back, like zoom it in a little bit more now on education, I just want to bring one pair of researchers' findings to you tonight. There are many, but this is a, this is a pretty, a study with some longitude. Bruce Joyce and Beverly Showers are two researchers who started paying attention to instructional coaching in 1982. And they have come back to their research now multiple times. And what they have found has been confirmed multiple times. And most recently, in their published work in 2002, Student Achievement Through Staff Development. And this chart just really summarizes nicely what they have found, which is, a lot of times, if you look at that first line in training, in professional development training, oftentimes that consists of presentation of theory. So on line one, and some discussion. And we often think that the professional learning that teachers receive in PD will be automatically applied and will have automatic transfer in the classroom. And what we know is that that doesn't automatically happen. In PD, when it is presentation of theory, as you can see here, there's almost zero transfer of skill, very little skill demonstration that comes straight out of direct theory. When we add demonstration into the training or practice and feedback into the training, the percent of participants who experience impact improves. But when we take the, take the support and the embedded training out of the PD context and bring it into the classroom context in an ongoing way with the teacher through coaching, that becomes a critical lever in that transfer going from PD into applied practice in the classroom that impacts students. So it's just, it's just one piece of evidence among many that have shown the, the, how critical coaching is in making our professional development dollars really even go as far as they can go. And on the next slide, from this study, they, I just pulled some of the key things, the, the key impacts. So the authors found that coaching appeared to contribute to the transfer of training in five big ways. And actually, this came up in our conversation at Islander Middle School with, when you were visiting, the, a question came up is what is, what is one of the biggest reasons that a teacher would go to a couch? What are one of the most high-impact strategies or practices that they do together? And I would look at the second bullet point here. It says, adapt the strategies more appropriately to their own goals and their own contexts. And teachers who worked with coaches were more able to adapt the strategies that they learned appropriately to their own context than teachers who weren't working with a coach. And I would say this is one of the number one things teachers are going to their coaches for support with. They've learned something in professional development. And then they go back to their classrooms. And they are getting better and better all the time at noticing and understanding the variability of their learner. But then they need to vary their practices, take that new strategy, and apply it in this very varied setting. And so we go to coaches often to help us apply our learning in our very unique, diverse, and varied contexts. And for some teachers, that's seven different classes a day. How do I do this with all these different learning needs? But among, among others, that's just one. And if we take a look at the next slide, the way that our coaches are learning to do this is to embed a lot of these moves into a coaching cycle. So we've spent time studying Jim Knight's Impact Cycle, a research-based strategy for taking teachers through a learning progression that is cyclical, where we're setting goals on student needs that are identified in the classroom. We are implementing teaching strategies to meet those needs in a laboratory-like environment, learning, watching, testing, giving feedback, adjusting, looking at data, and figuring out what moves we need to make next to get those, the, the outcomes to where we want them to be. And so that's what we're, what, what we have some time and flexibility for in our jobs is that just-in-time help. When a teacher comes and says, my second period was off the rails and I need to turn this around by fifth period, can you help me? Or is it, am I just in time? And coaches can do that. But we are also available for the ongoing cyclical work of instructional coaching in, in a longer relationship too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you want to also just touch briefly on this year specifically and the work with Coaching for Equity?
Yeah. Yeah. So I didn't get that graphic in here. Thank you for saying that. This year we're reading Elena Aguilar's Coaching for Equity. And it's just so much in line with the strategies and skills we need to learn for real change to happen, understanding so much more the beliefs and behaviors and ways of being of of adult learners. And so Coaching for Equity has helped us think about disrupting inequities in our system. We're starting with ourselves. Really having conversations that are about more than surface level, more than what can be seen on the surface, but really what what needs are in our classroom, what students, you know, and it pairs really well with universal design for learning. We're trying to remove barriers and disrupt inequities in our classrooms. And Elena Aguilar's book Coaching for Equity is giving us tools to do that and teaching us sort of the way of being attitudes, beliefs and behaviors that are underlying all of this. Like if the cycle work, the impact cycle is kind of our our hard skills. The Elena Elena's work sort of teaches us the soft skills of the person and making sure that that teacher is seen and known in a trusting relationship. And so we're we're kind of digging in all over the place. Another thing I wanted to point out to you, and this was a resource I really wanted to share with you. And so the embedded links are in the word video. But a couple of years ago, we really wanted to help define our coaching program for people who were new to it or new teachers to the district or people who just want to understand more what it is that instructional coaches do and the impact that it has in the classroom. So the teachers listed here helped collaborate on two different videos. They're each about between eight and 10 minutes. And there are testimonials of teachers, what they've gone to their coaches for, what that working relationship has been like, and what the impact on their students has been. So I invite you to take a look at those videos. And if you find you've only got a couple of minutes, I tried to highlight the minutes in the videos where the teachers are really talking practically about exactly what the work was, their data driven work, what their partnership looked like, what their specific goals were with coaches. But I, you know, I I don't know if this time is designed for questions or clarifications. If you have anything, I would just like to close by saying I think coaches are really furthering the investment that we make in our professional development funding. And they are that critical lever in bringing professional learning all the way to the student. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Danae. I think we're going to take just a minute and show, you know, just one, maybe elementary. Grab that video and just play it three minutes, Andrew. Just to hear directly from teachers, you know, we didn't have them come tonight. But they definitely value and appreciate the PD that they're getting in real time. First, and
curriculum that was the different resources and comparing them together. So we looked at curriculum that was targeted at third grade and fourth grade, the administrative assessment. So she showed me how to do those pieces as well.
And we analyzed the data after that. So we got back together, took a look at the results and kind of went through what maybe a typical phonics instruction experience might be. And so I could sit and watch my core group of students that I wanted to really zero in on.
I was having a hard time seeing if I was adequately answering all of the students' questions because they were having a hard time working independently. So she just sat back and she would mark every time my students asked a question and every time I answered it, as well as how often I was giving positive feedback. And that was just fascinating to see because it's so directly correlated with how well they were doing later in the lesson and later with their independent work. And it just was something I wasn't able to see on my own.
We noticed environmental things that we could change in the classroom that I didn't notice from my teacher perspective in being in the position of teaching at the time with the students.
And oftentimes this coach would go off and read and figure out ways that I didn't have time to look into for how to work with that particular style of learner. And then we would try something else. So whether it was introducing a reward system.
They also came in and modeled a couple of different lessons. And then before and after the modeling, we sat down to go over the why behind it. So I could understand the reasoning behind what they were doing.
And then we've worked together to kind of co-plan how to establish my literacy groups. So putting kids into guided reading groups, phonics groups or language groups based off of their data. Then after a couple of weeks, we decided to meet back together to kind of reevaluate, see how things were going, if I needed to change anything.
They are there to experience a specific lesson or a specific behavior with me in the classroom. They're able to provide more feedback. We can talk through it together and really figure out what the root of what I'm trying to solve is.
And once I saw her modeling her teaching with them and co-teaching with me on the unit, I was able to do the next lesson with her and just take off with it. And then we would.
And my coach helped me plan out math centers, which more individualized instruction, then they could go off to their math center and extend themselves as far as they could. And I feel like then they started being challenged. And I feel that challenge significantly impacted their math growth.
Unlike Danae said, the other video will be in there. You're welcome to watch the secondary one as well. But they they're doing some incredible work. It's not always something that can be seen or or touched and felt by outsiders because it really is work with the teacher and with the students. But we want to make sure to to keep bringing you what it is that they're doing and the huge impact they're having in our classrooms.
I just have one thing to add before we have any questions from the board is the the high value of coaches is that it is a non evaluative relationship. Even the conversations that a coach has with the principal, who is the evaluator, are aren't there the conversations between the coach and the teacher are confidential conversations. It's a safe place for them to talk about the practices and that is not then shared with the principals. So it's like to talk about directly impacting students. It's one of the most impactful ways that we can support teacher development.
And it's how our teachers are able to take risks. You know, they've got a safe person to come and provide them with feedback, to support them, to give them ideas, you know, and approaches that they might not even be thinking of, right? You heard a couple of the teachers talking about like, I didn't know this. And then they wrote this to me and I have this new idea. And so when we continue to talk about providing the very best instruction for all students across the district, our coaches are the ones who are helping to do that work.
Is now a good time for questions or?
Sure. Unless Brett, unless Doctor Rundle, you have anything to add?
So I I saw that the study was almost 20 years old. I was thinking because like that was actually like just a few years after I graduated from high school. And obviously, a lot of technology and tools like are available now that that weren't when this study from 2002 was 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 published. Is i- is there like the the ability to look at, you know, discussions or consultations in the classroom? And then in real time, like see what the outcomes are on student learning? When I was in school, again, that'd be harder to capture. But it seems like with adaptive curriculum, with online tools, that like after a consultation, maybe we could try to quantitatively see the effectiveness in terms of imparting instruction. Well, I mean, I I I just didn't see, I mean, I saw a lot of comments which are helpful, that like the perception is that it's helpful. But I didn't see a lot of like data just showing like that leads to increased knowledge uptake.
So I guess I Danae, you're welcome to to jump in. I think my first response to that would be, do you look at individual classroom data as a norm, as a board, right? Like, is that something that a teacher would report to you? A teacher reports their data and is able to track it. We've got a system called Home Room. They're able to see that in real time. And so I guess I don't I don't understand perhaps the question or the purpose of wanting that information. Like if a teacher says to it, like I and maybe I'm naive, if a teacher says like, no, my students' scores are growing. I am seeing better engagement. I am seeing increased understanding and and you know, accessibility for students. To me, I I I accept that in their professional judgment. They've made that determination. What is it quantitatively that you're really looking for?
Well, I mean, my understanding is right, like that that a lot of like curriculum, like when I look at you know, the various activities are online, like there's a score for like, you know, accuracy, time for completion, like a lot of metrics. And in the same way, like like engagement with the website, right? Like we can measure like engagement, like aptitude, like you know, appreciation for the knowledge, like I would just to me, like what would be helpful is to see like perhaps and maybe those tools don't exist. I don't know. Like I know when it comes to website engagement, like you can A B test very well, like if there's a change or an intervention, like how does that affect like interactivity with the website? Like I would like to see like, you know, similar things like for adaptive testing, like there's an intervention, like are kids like getting the to understand the material earlier? Again, like I don't know the software. It's like maybe like that functionality doesn't exist. I just like to know.
Sorry, Tim.
I guess I want to add up to that in that I think part of the support or me, how I see the board work is and we're always thinking of systems and as we're thinking of investments, right? We're thinking of and as we're having budget tests, right? When we're thinking investment, we're thinking of as we're moving towards outcome, what part of our system is contributing to those outcomes? And we do see larger outcomes, right? And so part of this, just like when I I when I think of counseling, we potentially do counseling as an intervention at the very end. And I I hear some of the coaching simple. I've always been pushing for what new ways can we really address our kids' needs? Now, right? More like maybe more community wide, more larger programming. So similar like coaching, I I do also have a question. And I I hear traditionally we do a one on one. So when we have evaluation kind of to kind of see what type of teachers seek out coaching? Is it mandatory? Is it like seeking out? And like, how how long is usually a coaching relationship? And then at the end of that, what are, I would actually like quantitative outcome because it does add to, it feeds to the the larger system to kind of, does it improve the grades? Do they feel more welcome? Does it increase the and all of these are different components of our system. So I I agree with you that I like to see more of a very quantitative outcome of that to have a better understanding because in the end it is how do we make the system better? And I, you know, I appreciate the qualitative and but when we're investing in certain parts of the system, we also need to know. And so that's that's like a for me, the outcome, because I would like, because I heard you said like teachers who are plateaued and they need this, right? And then so is it seasoned teachers who are plateaued or is it young? New teachers who need to be orientated in because knowing because there is a definite trend, knowing where the coaching is the most effective. It also helps us to also change the coaching style. And do we just do a broad presentation or do we do a one on one? So that's kind of similar, somewhat similar to Dan. But I also like to, in addition to that, as we're also thinking about system changing and we're all part of the, we're all different components. I like, I'm curious of like, how are we, and maybe this is for Donna, like how how is this position funded? Is it similar to our when enrollment is low? We also, you know, kind of when we talk about certified instructional or administrative, where do they kind of fit into that? Because I don't think we've ever had a conversation to understanding these component of the our our larger system. And that would be helpful to.
So I think your question, I think I hear is how are the coaches funded?
Yes.
So we they are not part of the prototype of the school model. So that means they are not part of basic ed. They are funded from levy dollars.
So Tim, your question about like which kind of teachers are most likely to seek out coaching, you know, is that a question that you're asking right now that you'd like an answer to or is that like an example? Is that a question?
Well, so I can I can answer a few things in general and I could, I can get you the data, but I I'm not going to get it by teacher. Because one of the qualifications of a teacher working with a coach is that anonymity and not reporting to their evaluator or to the public to say, these 200 teachers work with a coach and these these 15 do not. Because they're really, they're trying to grow their craft in an effort to try to improve the experience for kids. So we can totally turn back to the data as to like the number of coaching cycles that each coach has has done over the course of the past year. We could look at individual teacher data and we could collect a sampling of that to show you. If you think about the student or the teacher who talked about answering questions, right? And so sometimes it's not about test scores. It's not about a grade. It's really about engagement or the ability to respond to a student's need, right? So the teacher was saying, you know, I wasn't sure if I was answering students' questions. So somebody came in, they monitored that, they saw how many were asked, by whom, and then who had responded to, so that that teacher then goes in and the next time they would want to see improvement. And so the coach can then track that for them. So there are things like that that are also quantitative that are not test related or grade related that we can look for ways to try to quantify, but you also want to be careful that we're also not making more work just to to report. So you know, we Danae, if you've got some other ideas, if we've got, we had coaches for a while, keeping coaching logs, right? Who were you meeting with? When were you meeting? What was the goal? What was the time spent? What was the outcome? We can pull some of that. We can ask for some of that. But at the end of the day, I guess the question back would be, how much time do we want to spend on that work? Versus how much time do we want to spend working with staff to improve instruction?
But you can also appreciate our role in making sure of accountability and that and really do justice to the instructional coaches in showing how they're effective. And so I think it creates a lot of, when we don't know a lot of information, if we don't do justice to our instructional coaches by saying that that they're doing the work, right? And then somehow part of that is like as a system, we we do need to have a better, be able to better tell the story and be able to tell our community exactly how help, you know, how it's support the outcome, their student outcome. And so that's kind of where I'm coming from of this. And in the end, it is an accountability piece from our perspective, from my perspective.
Danae, to start, Fred, you want to jump in?
Danae, did you want to go first or I'll or I'll jump in? You know, one of the one of the things that I've heard us or a question that came up is, you know, what does that individual touch point look like with a coach and a teacher? This year, I've had the opportunity to work most closely with the two coaches, the instructional coaches at the high school. And when I think about their work and I think about the evaluation process that they go through with me and then along with two of the administrators at the high school, I really think about their impact in three different ways. Excuse me. There is definitely the individual teachers that they're working with. Some of those are newer teachers. Some of those are in the middle of their careers and some of them are very veteran teachers. And they're working on many different elements. Oftentimes, those are teachers that are seeking them out. Or it might have been a conference that an administrator would have had with that person and then they seek out the the coach. But that's just one of three legs to the stool. The other one is they're leading professional learning communities and really shepherding along really meaningful conversations. And so when you saw that some of that research that Danae was showing, you know, we can go or we can send people to a conference, but the likelihood that they come back and be able to apply that meaningfully, unless they do it in real time, it's oftentimes lost. And back in the day, when you got a three ring binder at a conference, you'd come back from that conference and and hopefully it would be put to use. The goal with the coaches is they're not, they're going to conferences with teachers, coming back and then engaging and helping to support the implementation. And the final way is through whole staff professional learning. And you know, there's the element of our district directed days or those professional days like we just had on March 18th, where our coaches are planning alongside principals or they're planning together to come up with meaningful learning. And so part of the experiment, if you will, to get the And so part of the experiment, if you will, to get the data um is the risk, which is. Without the coaches, what would some of our adoptions recently have looked like? What will some of our adoptions in the future in terms of teachers being able to take their instructional practice? With instructional materials, blend those and then impact student learning. And so if we remove that or we didn't have coaches during um COVID. When we were backward planning and when we were digging apart standards, um, I really fret of what that would have looked like. Not because we don't have capable teachers, but those coaches are essential people to come alongside and really work with them. When I arrived in Mercer Island School District, I was quite surprised that we had. Um, one instructional coach at the time for all of elementary and that was a technology coach. I had come from um a a district where every building. Uh, part of their F T E was a building resource teacher or a building coach. And so I think we've tried to build that model so that we are um expanding opportunities for our teachers. I do appreciate where we're looking at, hey, where where is the impact on students and what does that student learning look like? Um, I think we're seeing that in some of the trajectory um of our students and we're gonna have to continue to watch that over time. Um, we've got some some uh messy data becoming out of COVID. Uh, but I really think that the coaches played an instrumental role. Uh, in working through what we just experienced for the last two years. Danae?
Thanks, Fred. Yeah, just to speak, I smile at the thought of having, um, you know, Director Glow, it's what you referred to. Is that that um almost, you know, um, the data being so quickly gathered. And so computerized and it sounded a lot to me like progress monitoring. And are we progress monitoring at many, many, many steps throughout a program? And um and I I think. I think that kind of data collected that often and that regularly might go along a little bit more with the style of a. Curriculum implementation coach or a curriculum fidelity coach. There has, there were a few years back where we had coaches designated to support adoption of curriculum materials. For instance, reading curriculum at the elementary levels. And those curriculums come with progress monitoring. And could collect that kind of data that often with a coach. But our coaching K twelve isn't always embedded in a program like that or a system like that. It's often much more creative than that. And the data that a teacher and a coach might be sitting down and looking at is. Last week's pre-assessment, the next day, the exit feedback after that pre-assessment. And so what instruction am I going to provide on day uh on the third day of this unit? So that I have better outcomes on that exit slip on the way out. It's that micro, it's that micro level. Um, and so I I respect what you're asking for on a broad scale of the. That evidence of impact. And I think it's really hard to collect when we have coaches coming in and helping some teachers. Um, on that very small scale, but that makes a huge difference. And it in and some of the the veteran teachers who are working with coaches, and there are many. Would say the coaches are helping them with the art and craft of coaching or of teaching. And our new teachers, which access the coaches so, so, so much, would say these coaches are helping me. Get through a pivotal, vulnerable time where I'm not sure this is the career path for me. And they are helping us retain um our teachers. So I I I hope that addresses a little bit of um. The kind of, it sounded like progress monitoring that is available in some settings and not in all. Um, in those larger, you know, larger data sets. A lot of our day to day coaching. Um, is like Fred said, leading um professional development for our staffs. Leading professional learning communities around individualized needs and then one to one coaching on um what's coming up for that teacher. And when we started this in twenty twelve, uh, Dr. Plano made it very clear that he wanted it to be invitational. And it has remained that way. Our, um, you had a question about our coach, are our teachers required to work with coaches? And they are not. It's not required. It's invitational because that is the context in which there's the most trust. And collaboration and positive impact is when two people are choosing to work together on something. So that's why uh it's not mandatory.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to to respond um. To say that the project that you're describing, Dan, sounds like it would be really interesting, but it also sounds like an immense amount of work. Because it's, I'm taking a research methods class right now and I know Tam is very well familiar with this, but it's. It's a project. It would involve a lot of thinking and a lot of planning and a lot of. Change in what the coaches were doing, if they were having to like collect data as well. And I'm just saying like that has to be something that the board as a whole discusses and votes on if we're gonna ask for it. Um, like, so if you wanna make a motion.
So I totally agree. I think we're gonna have this conversation like soon, but I think it's something well fitted for a committee. Uh, to look and to sort of update like a study from two decades ago.
So just probably, so so another question that could be asked is, are there any more recent studies in instructional coaching? I'm sure there are like hundreds.
I don't know. Like, I mean, we we're listening for forty minutes and this was like the study site, so.
So if you, if you're asking for more information, they're trying to give us the information, but I would actually ask that if you Jimmy, if if there are more. I don't know if other people are also interested, if there are more up to date studies. I'm sure this is something that is studied a lot.
I'm not, I'm just, I mean, if there are, the study shows that instructional coaches, of course, and all coachings help. But then as part of a a mindset, the mindset of how about how we do things, however we do. As we're as we're making justification on why we implement certain kind of component in our. We need, we also need this accountability loop. I totally appreciate the invitation model. I mean, at the university, we have coaches as well and people who use it and people who want it and people who need it and people who don't want to. And so there's always this tension, right? Because from my perspective, it's like we we wanna focus on who needs it. Right? So there's there's also like a privilege that kind of that is great that we uh have. And also necessity of how do we move our system along. And so those are just conversation, I think, yes, the fortune need. But this is not about like at this moment, we want, but but I would like uh maybe in our policy. Later on, it's kind of like, as we're making investments, we we need to have part of the process. In social work, there is an evaluation process regardless of what kind of evaluation process. There's gotta be evaluation evaluation process at the end to make sure that we are still going in the right direction.
And testimonials, you don't consider an evaluation process?
Uh, one part, but then when it's only, you know, but then I I don't feel like we have had any evaluation process. So yes, as as we talk about, testimony is one component and then we'll talk about what does that look like? I don't think we have gotten there to even talk about what is an evaluation process.
I'm I'm gonna beg to differ a little bit because we do have even though um we that talked about staff evaluation. And yes, it is invitational, but the site administrators, the principals and associate principals who um are. Um, mandated to evaluate staff um throughout, every year, throughout the year, they um. Can always make a recommendation and strongly encourage a staff member to um. Engage in coaching, doesn't mean they can mandate it in the evaluation, but it is one of the um tools. That an administrator can utilize when there is a teacher that isn't meeting the standards. And so that evaluation data is one of the data points that is brought to the board. Um, here's, you know, here's your staff evaluation as to how teachers are doing within the Danielson model, which is the state adopted model. For a teacher evaluation.
I I I think the question is more about the systems evaluation, not the individuals and like not like the granular level, but just like broad trends. It's like what, like, you know, what age of teachers like utilizes these resources? Like again, like no anonymity clause because it's not about like individuals, it's about the systems and like, you know, are the systems that are in place? Like the more efficient, the most efficient, like how do you wanna shape it? Like, how does that allocation of like resources, like an investment make sense? Not individual, just like high level like systems evaluation.
So the way that I look at it and 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 I've not really wanted to comment cause I've rather asked questions during this time, but um. To me, I see this as project based learning for teachers. And we know that project based learning for students is most effective way for them to learn something and then carry it forward. Um, I know that for me in my career, it would be amazing if I had someone by my side. Coaching me along the way, hey, I noticed you did this, maybe try this next time, it's gonna be more effective. Um, and different ideas and such. Um, I think it's phenomenal and I think that the focus on accountability. Um, needs to be. Are our teachers learning? Are they enjoying what they're doing? Are they wanting to stay at Mercer Island School District and continue in their career? Are they loving their job? Because we know that if they're happy with their job, they're gonna be more effective at it like we all are. Those, those are, um, I I don't think there's numbers. I mean, we could.
Those can be numbered.
Well, no, they're not. They're not. But I think that's my point is I don't want coaches spending their time doing that. I want them working with teachers and then our teachers working with students. So I think this whole. I think this whole data proving this stuff, uh, it's going too far. So we know, you had your turn. We know the best ways to teach. Our teachers who are instructional coaches know the best way to teach teachers, which is different than teaching students. And we can see the results in everything that we monitor regarding students. Student engagement, student scores, student assessments, whether or not they're social emotional learning. All of this is tied together. The better the teacher, the more successful our students are gonna be. And maybe we should ask our teachers and I assume that they're asked all the time because I assume that our staff is doing their job. Um, that that teachers are are enjoying this program or I don't, I think we would be hearing a lot about it.
So we do, um, as far as data, right? Like observing data is something that is of interest. Uh, after every professional development day that our coaches lead or P L C. Um, our coaches collect that data and that helps then inform who wants direct connections. That informs the next for trainings and opportunities. It informs the district practice of, you know, here are things that are in need. Our teachers need this and then we we lean on our instructional coaches who are then able to provide that. Um, so we do have lots of surveys. Um, and in every survey, it says, you know, do you wanna work with a coach on this or list something you wanna work with a coach on? Um, I can also, just as a quick anecdote, because it came up as a a win in an instructional technology meeting, I was in today. Um, one of our I T Cs, they do what are called technology learning cycles, it's a T L C. And um our high school coach was sharing that in one week, she was exhausted, but she got in eleven full cycles. With staff. And in doing that, the staff completed a a response or reflection to her. Um, but that they were, they loved the process, they loved what it was doing for their kids and they were absolutely implementing new strategies. So if there are things like that that are in existence that people would like to see, then we can go down that route. But that stuff does exist. We do that. That's part of our jobs.
I'm I'm I would be interested, and this is just me, so this is not the board asking for, but just just commenting that I think I find it really interesting to know. What teachers say they would like to work on rather than like, this is the the lesson plan that was created or this is the thing that was done. But like, but like what spontaneously pops into their head? Like, how are they using these services? Like, like, I'm really struggling with. You know, teaching these different kids at different levels of math, like I need some help with this, like I am certainly classroom management, I whatever, like. I would like to hear what those things are, like that's just, I don't know about other people, but that seems like that would be interesting if it's not a lot of extra work. I also, as a person who has been in a classroom, like teaching twenty odd kids, like as an official therapist in a different district. Like I, there's no, there's not one centimeter of my brain that I could have used to improve what I was doing with those kids. Because like with at least elementary school kids, it's like your focus is so much on the kids and what they're doing and who's poking who. And who's like listening to your instructions and who needs to go potty and who's like acting out, right? It's like, it's very tough to to pull back like that and to look at the big picture and be like, wow, how could I be improving my skills and do a better job of what I'm doing? So that that seems, you know, super valuable to me as, you know, assuming that it's being. Used correctly as as a as a force for good, which I am sure it is, you know, so um. I did have an actual question, which is, which is, um, can you just talk a little bit? And and we have an entire incentive to get through, I realize, but can you just talk a little bit about. Um, whether the instructional coaches play much of a role in individualizing education like in a classroom for students?
Sure.
Uh, like personalized learning kind of, you know, like is that something that they would be asked?
Um, so uh, what, one of the cool things, and Danae, you can speak to this because you hear about it all the time as well. Um, but we have, for example, instructional technology coaches, sped coaches and um content based or school based coaches, right? So we now have the ability to have teachers, there's a student issue, right? A student can't access it or they're not being challenged. And the coaches together meet and they problem solve. They talk about different strategies that they've seen work in different classrooms and. And then they work with the teacher to help support what that student might need. So it might be a an adaptive device or technology. It might be. Um, a a specific tool or strategy of engaging the student. It might be um how that student is going to demonstrate their learning. And so they worked collectively. When it comes to like individual student problems, um, and then collectively. So it really, yes, it absolutely gets down to the very granular student level. Um, and it really depends on what a teacher needs, right? If the teacher says, I really need help with my entire class, right? If he just says, okay, I've got two kiddos and I feel like I'm missing something for them. I don't know quite how to engage them or push them or whatever. Then the coach comes in and can help problem solve that. I mean, that's what uh Chris Copland Ray does all the time. Um, as she's working with third and fourth grade teachers, um, you know, we've got three students in uh. At Island Park who are in a gen ed classroom and she works directly with that teacher in supporting that that teacher to support the students. And how how are they accessing the high pack curriculum? How are they being challenged and pushed? Um, it's not solely up to the teacher to come up with with everything. And so they co-plan, they, Chris pushes in. There's lots of things that that happen on individual student level as well as district wide, school wide, grade level wide.
And our special services coaches, our special education coaches also work in partnership with the instructional coaches. They're they're a coaching cadre. So when there's a an issue with the students um I N P. They might be working together with the gen ed and the um special ed teacher to best meet the needs for that student.
Yeah, I I know also the corporate world are used coaches for a number of things and it's very individually driven driven. Um, whether it's speaking, presentations, uh, running a group, running an organization. Uh, no questions asked about the cost. Usually the cost is much higher than over here. Um, coaches also follow individuals, fully. A lot of value is seen from that as well, following executives as they perform their day for months at a time. Uh, never any goal around comparing two executives and their benefit for coaches. Because everybody has different strengths and weaknesses that you you pick what you want to. So I'm accustomed to that. And I've also had coaches for physical work, whether it's, you know, biking or running or uh physical training. So intuitively, we've used it for those type of cases. Another one I'd say is mental health counselors or therapists or another form of couch, coach as well. And we use those. So now do we do data analysis? On all that, it seems like that was done in a research lab and were applying best practices. Uh, as opposed to, you know, us being the the fractal research lab, right? Somebody else did the research, told us the bad best practices, do we double down on their research again at the micro level? Or not? It it feels like, um, I just wanna use a coach and make myself a better person. And I don't want to be, um, I don't wanna be a hamster.
Danae, if we're a corporate world, then we have unlimited funding, I agree.
But no, we don't.
But.
And.
We are identifying what is the right number and and welcome amount of time. I think there gotta be some kind of balance. Uh, in any of the system that we, you know, because we have management for everything. And so I think that should be part of our kind of mindset.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna go to physical therapy like in a week and a half, like, right? But like in order to get that paid for from insurance, like I have to show like. I have an injury, like, right? Like, I mean, don't, but if I like, just wanted to get like. A coach like outside, like at least to use that analogy, like insurance isn't gonna pay for it. Like, so there is a process, like I'm not. The point is, like, when we're talking about coaches, like the environment, like. Is dependent, I think, in terms of the evaluation and like sort of like the supply and like what makes sense. Like, we're already on, almost coming up on an hour, but I I I do think like there should be a process that's a little bit more formal for value. But I I I do think, like, there should be a process that's a little bit more formal for value, personally.
As a board, though, we're not asking for anything.
I mean, I guess not as a board.
Um, we, I don't wanna go any further down this rabbit hole because we have an entire meeting, and I do not wanna top our record-setting meeting of last time. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Danae. And we did have a couple of other items, um, I think that in light of the time, we will move the um. Highly capable update to your next meeting, um, it was the, it's the presentation that was done at the superintendent. Um, teaching and learning advisory a few weeks back, but we'll have Jamie come back and be able to do that.
If it's possible, like, if that's already been. Like, created, like, it would be useful, like, with the other board materials to get it like a few days before to review. And maybe, at least, I would move that if the materials are available, like, other board materials when it comes to the superintendent report. That it be provided ahead of time, just like if it's important information, just like wrap our heads around, like, sort of think about. Like, that's the motion that I'll make, you know, with the second in it, um, that the superintendent's report to be provided with the other board materials.
Does that need to be, like, put into OE nine?
I mean, I'm not sure if, like, we need to, like, adjust, like, policy, I'm just, I mean. The rules are, I just, I would like it to be provided, like, I'm. I understand, like, the board maybe has to make the request, like, I think, whether we have a discussion now or later point. When it comes to superintendent report, I would like that, like, the highly capable, like, the same report that we had today, that we spent an hour on. Like, I would just like it ahead of time, like, in the same way that we have, like, these other agenda items, like, the materials. So whatever the materials are, so I can, like.
Yeah, so I just wanna reply back, so if it's prepared in advance to appreciate advanced distribution of the. The power material, the presentation materials, I will say, as somebody who has had to do a board update sometimes. We're literally working on them the day of, so it's not always possible because we're. We're taking feedback from the community and getting inputs from other people throughout the system. And to give you a more comprehensive um report, just why, and we don't necessarily have the presentation materials ready that far in advance.
Like, and for the same reason, like, it just makes it very helpful, like, to look over the numbers, like, to make sure. I can look back, like, past board meetings and, like, sort of come up to speed.
Yeah, so we do have a couple of other items, I don't think we have an actual slide deck for them. But we do wanna keep the board updated on um where we are going with the website, so I know Ian and Andrea's. Have been working diligently on this, so they just wanna review with the board where we are in that process.
Sure, yeah, uh, in the winter, uh, we met, uh, Andrew's, uh, myself, uh, Dr. Rundle. Uh, started gathering feedback from the leadership team um on our website. Started a discussion about what works well with our site, what deficiencies we have in communicating with parents through our website. And we came up with uh three larger topics that were presented to us in this initial leadership team meeting. Feedback was the website, it was very text-heavy. Uh, there was a need for implicit implementation of graphics and more effects and more video on the website. And some of our content um was a little bit out of date.
Those are high-level, there's one thing I wanna do or continue on, just highlight the work that Ian is doing. Um, I really wanted to share that, you know, Ian started with us um in November?
November fifteen.
November fifteen, um, and already I I hear from from multiple key members and staff members. Um, some of the work that he's done in just continuing, um, sharing our stories through social media, Instagram stories. Um, I've I've seen him utilize tools like Canva, um, to create more graphics and and design materials for the website. Um, so I did wanna just give a shout out to to Ian and the work that he's done, um, and looking forward to working with him in this uh, in this project. Um, Ian shared some of the high-level feedback that we received from the leadership team, um, there's, of course, other feedback that is, um. That that we've heard and we're gonna continue to work on, there's things that that were doing well, and there's things that we can make improvements on. Um, some other things that uh that came up, or, uh, you know, as Ian mentioned, um. Having some more graphical interface, um, one thing, one uh topic of feedback that I took back from it is, uh. Because so many of our school colors are red, our district website is red, our high school's red, our middle school's red. I didn't even really pay attention to how much that red blends in, um, and for someone who is colorblind or has difficulty. Red can sometimes be a very difficult color, um, to see in terms of of contrast, so that was one. Um, instance of feedback that I I just kind of said, I go, oh, yeah. I couldn't see that myself, but it took someone, um, really telling me about that. And so we heard about other accessibility issues um on the website, as I mentioned, Ian's already um making great change, uh, made great. Making great progress in terms of implementing some changes, but I wanted to highlight a tool um for accessibility that we have already implemented. Um, so, there was, I'm gonna share my screen so our viewers at home uh can follow along as well. Um, but I did wanna highlight, um, we added a tool called uh AudioI onto our website. Um, it is a small blue icon in the corner here, so I thought this would be a great opportunity to to just showcase it for the community. Um, there are um accessibility tools built directly in the website, however, this is an overlay. On top of the website, and when you click on this little person, it brings up a variety of tools that allow our users. Um, to choose some of their preferences, and I'll just, I'll highlight some of the the high-level ones. Um, you know, I mentioned the, you know, red that's on the website, and so there's a contrast button that quickly allows any user to. Switch between different levels of of contrast depending on, um, you know, their particular needs. Um, one thing that was really cool was just the ability to have a enlarged cursor um on here. This will highlight, um, you know, different things, so right now, this is gonna highlight, and I think it tells me on here, it says shortcuts.
I think this is important, can you turn off the the sliding thing? Because there's some people that that will actually make motions there.
Um, other things that we have on here is just the ability to dynamically adjust the size of the text. You know, within the website, and there you can go through there, um, it also does um additional things for. Um, the um image captions. Um, that the screen readers go through, um, so I did just want to, just to highlight. Um, this particular tool, because I know it can get lost in the the bottom right-hand corner of the screen there. Um, but this is a tool that we launched earlier this year based on some feedback, um, and that will carry forward. Um, with any implementation changes that we make, um, the other thing that we did as part of this process was. Um, we reached out to um additional organizations, so the Association of Computer Professionals in Education. Are um a variety of school districts across Oregon and Washington, um, and there was a thread going around on that reading table around. Um, current website providers and whether they were happy with them and whether they were um looking at making shifts, so. Ian and I took a, took some time to look at that data, um, which also helped us look at other websites, you know, okay, great, let's let's talk about. You know, what we like about these other websites, and then Ian also reached out to a a group, um, of, and you're gonna have to remind me of the organization.
Comnet is a monthly meeting of communications professionals in school districts. And uh, had a conversation with uh gentleman named Chris Campbell from, he wasn't Charlotte, he's now a child school district. About a pa- a platform called Parent Square, which is not specifically uh tied to websites, but it's a communications platform that uses email. Social media, apps, and texting, robocalls, similar to school messenger, um, as a communication platform. It's just that, I'm gonna do a, you know, call with them shortly, he uses a platform.
So, to follow in Dan's statistics question, do we use website statistics to know what people use and where the hot points are on our site?
Yeah, so uh, the current website is hosted through uh Blackboard, um, the primary schoolware is on Blackboard. There's analytics built within there that looks at page views as well as clicks, uh, but we also use the Google Webmaster tools.
Yeah.
Which allows us to see a little bit more, um, because it's. What the Google Webmaster tools allows us to do is, when people type into Google searches, to be able to find our pages, right? Because they're not always going to our page and then clicking on links that are going to Google and typing in athletic packet or.
Calendar.
Calendar, you know, responsible district calendar, um, so the Google website, uh, math, webmaster tools allows us to do that, uh, see that information. And we did use that as part of our last review to develop some of those popular links, um, and the tools there. Um, but one thing that we can always do a better job of is looking at that throughout the year. And then making adjustments to our popular links as opposed to having to be static once, you know.
Sure.
Once, once the source.
Right.
Continuing to update that as, you know, throughout the year, different things come up, right?
Yeah, super technical sexual go down, I guess.
It would be interesting to see if people, if that is not helpful.
I concur, like, uh, recently, I noticed a marked change in our social media, thank you. I was curious, and I don't know, like, uh, if you mentioned this already, and my apologies if you have. But as you're seeking to understand, you know, kind of get feedback, uh, did you, have you guys planned to kind of outreach to the community?
We'll talk about the processes. Some people, I'll let you.
Yeah, we um, we completed demos with three uh vendors, Blackboard, who's our current um website provider. Uh, School Messenger does websites as well, School Messenger is our current provider for uh email communications, robocalls, and text notifications. Um, there's a uh school in life, kind of inside of your text notification. And then also Final Site, is another uh website vendor, and we went through demos with them, looking at menu structures, content management system, backend management. And we got uh information on all uh three of those uh companies as to what they can uh use going forward. Blackboard is gonna, has new templates that they are very proud of, that they, uh, we talked to them about, and the same with um. School Messenger and and Final Site is, there's different templates that can be uh put on the site with different menu structures and different. Ways to show data, ways to show information, ways to show stories, video, uh, photos.
Part of those demos was to look at the backend content management systems, of the functionality with the the way they should edit. Um, right now, some of the feedback that we heard from our staff is that it can be a bit cumbersome, um, in terms of of updating the website, so looking at those tools. To see how easy is it to put in with new graphics and everywhere, things like that, or even just changing layouts. Um, right now with our website, teachers get a standard layout, um, and so when you go through a website, you often see a lot of text because. That's the basic layout, the one large column section, um, so just having some of that dynamic functionality. We also looked at pricing, supportability, um, feedback from other districts, and at this point, we have identified a vendor. That we would like to go to, uh, to implement this, um, and so we're working with them to finalize details with a vendor. And then getting into the process of the timeline, um, we had a a conversation about a potential launch date of January first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we were initially looking at the start of the school year, it really felt like, in order to be able to have a a community. Uh, community feedback and a true process, we didn't have enough time to implement by the uh September first day. The benefit of having a January first date is it also gives us opportunity to have staff back in the building. So as we look at the, look at navigation and what pages we can move over, we'll have staff available to us, where in the summer we typically don't, because we lose this admin staff. Um, and so with the January first timeline, uh, at the beginning of April, uh, Ian is gonna send a message out to the community. Uh, letting them know about this, uh, the timeline, and then sharing a form for them to uh be able to participate in committees. Um, and um, and be part of the process of not just uh. Looking at menu navigation, but also looking at the type of elements that we want, um, when you look at some of the templates, there are some that have the rotating calories. Um, there's some that have um video elements that are on the first page, there's some that have large backup images and.
Is there any that have, like, um, like, easy survey functionality, like, that gives analytics, like, for any of these three? Like, I mean, to just sort of do, like, basically, right, like, thought exchange, but easier, like, more like user accessible, like, on sort of like. Pointed areas where we wanna get, like, insight into, you know, how people feel and, you know.
So like for us to survey the community?
Yeah.
You know, I don't believe that we actually discussed that as part of the evaluation, there are um different modules that will do things like, uh. For example, with teacher pages, right now, our elementary uh teacher pages uh can be built within the current website. And it gives them the ability to have discussions and various other ways for students to provide feedback within that. I have not looked within community um surveys, um, primarily because we have tools like Google Forms. Thought Exchange and other things like that that would typically be used for that, and then at the schools, if they're doing it with students, it would be within school, a group, classroom. Um, but that's certainly something I can think of.
There are, there are analytics on all the three of these platforms that will tell you where where people are coming from, what pages they're landing on, what pages they're going to. What types of devices um people are using to access your site, whether it's tablets or laptops or.
And just to remember that we don't actually have, like, a web person, like, like.
We don't have a web map.
I heard from you, it's more like a a tool similar to Thought Exchange or Survey.
Give it this quick, like, sort of pointed, like, short surveys that, like, also, like, if there's any, like, analytic, like, overlay, right? That sort of, like, makes sense of the information, and the way the thought exchange does, like, that bubbles it up, like, you know, just a thought to throw out.
I I would encourage everyone, if they have an artist, to look at the city of Mercer Island, the Let's Talk pages, which are really, really well done, I think, like, how they, um. Kind of like, it's like their online engagement site, literally, let's talk about Mercer.org, you can get there from the city. Website, but but, um, it's sort of like, here's like the Aubrey Davis Park Trails Safety Improvement Project, and it's a place where people can, like, submit ideas. They can ask questions, they can see who in the city is responsible for a project, like, who to reach out to, you know, whatever. Like, it's a really nice community, and it's beautiful, it's like super simple, so I don't know who who your counterpart would be in the city or how they're doing that. Yeah, so I I also wanted to say that I have recently had, recently, you can all imagine why, to spend time on thirty different school districts' websites. All across the country, and I will say, definitely, our website's due for a a freshen up, and it's it is text-heavy. And I myself have been frustrated trying to find things over the years, but I would say that we're in the top third already of websites. There are some really awful school district websites out there, like, really the pit, so we're we're not doing that bad. Um, and I didn't want to offer anyone at any point wants to pick my brains, like, about it, um, there were definitely things where I jotted down, like, this is an amazing idea. Kind of along the lines of, like, who do I talk to, like, you know, we have that information on the website, you just have to navigate to it, like, I have a question about. My bus route or whatever, you get there, but it's very, like, nineteen nineties, kind of like, you click on transportation, you click on the issue of the bus. And then you click on the person, and then you click on the thing, and then you get to an email, but it's like, you can make it more fun. So, yeah, I'm I'm really excited about this, I'm looking forward to it, and 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 also just wanted to echo, sorry, one second. Wanted to echo that it's just been a pleasure working with Ian on all the social media stuff, and I know that you, Ian, are like, with the the search process, like. You are already squeezing everything you can, like, out of the website that we have, and out of the the texting and the emailing system that we have, like, it's super limited in its functionality, so you're doing bridges.
I guess, um, as you're in the process of doing the website, can we take a step back to, uh, I think sometimes we jump too much into the weeds. And we use the same mechanism to get information, when those mechanisms and those pathways are fundamentally flawed already for certain parts of our community. Right, so if we're talking about how do we provide information to people, and website is one of them, I I think. We need to step back and think about how do we do focus groups, how do we go into the community, talk to them, give them options? And then if we continue to do surveys and thought exchange, you don't worry, cut out a portion. I make it, actually, I like that exchange, but I get frustrated, and I stop after answering five questions. And so part of it is, like, uh, kind of like, take a step backward and think about, like, oh, how how does our community need to get information? And then all the information really comes through the website, comes through social media, and things like that, but just, I encourage you all to kind of, um. Not just gonna go this pathway.
Yeah, yeah.
In our, in our timeline, when we're looking at our our milestones and the implementation plan. Uh, I shared that Ian is planning on sending a few teachers to the community, just to kind of, you know, let them know about the change and have opportunities sign up. Uh, but we've also discussed utilizing some of our um, our committees, like our superintendent, learning advisory committees, our technology advisor groups, our student senate. Um, other things that we're looking at doing, uh, as well as, I mentioned, a a January first rollout. Um, so we're actually looking at an iterative process and improving the website, and not just gathering feedback once. And then taking that and and saying, okay, here's what we think that means, um, so with our implementation, we talked to the vendor about implementing a sandbox. Us around the September one timeline.
What does that mean?
Uh, so it's not the live website, our live website will still be live, but a somewhat offline accessible.
Tested out and.
Correct, um, whatever it is.
Yeah.
It's not a demo, but we would actually be building it on that site, and so over the process of September through, let's say, December. Um, there would be opportunity for those feedback groups, uh, to come back in and say, okay, great, here's what you've done so far. Here's some of the changes that I'd like to make, so just continue being able to iterate and improve on that. So that when we get to that just uh January first timeline, uh, we've had multiple cycles of of feedback and review.
That also sounds like a bigger conversation to be had by the board and the new superintendent, so.
Yeah, but just to recognize our community is beyond our committees, and we have a very accessible, different main communities out there that we should really, um. Hope into and. And then we have a very accessible, different main communities out there that we should really, um, hope into and, you know, maximize their availability.
So always, yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I don't appreciate the update so much and I want to be informed of it. I know you guys are also going based on kind of the people asking for it. This is seven, is it seven thirty? I can't remember.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Um, it's a six o'clock meeting and we haven't even gotten to our agenda yet. I truly don't care what our website is, as long as we can find the things we need. And I think that I'm the majority of the community. There's people who it's their thing and they're gonna have input. I'm not interested in getting input personally, I'm speaking for myself. Um, the communication, getting the information to people, that's really important. It is function beyond that. I, I don't know why we're talking, like going to this level of, of comments in this meeting, like, I, I'm sorry. I just, I think we're going overboard with community interaction, community feedback. It's important, but what's important is that people are getting the information they need. And is, if we needed to do it a different way, hey, guys, who are experts in the field, tell us what you're doing. Even, don't even tell us what you're doing, just do it. I mean, I, I, I'm sorry, I just, this is going beyond what the board needs to participate in.
Yeah. Thank you.
But thank you for the update and thank you for solving the problem. That's the big thing.
And as you noted in the superintendent update, there was something about the website and that will continue as this evolves. Um, so that you are knowledgeable about the timeline and the processes. We do apologize, we have one more thing that I do need to share with the board because spring break is coming and I cannot believe it, but I have to talk about COVID. Um, one of the things that we're implementing, um, over the spring break is some take home COVID testing. I do want to note that we did not experience an uptick in positive COVID cases following the February break or the change in the mask, right? So that's good news, but we have had sufficient COVID nineteen tests become available to the district. And so we, um, can necessarily assume that all students and staff will be able to avoid COVID exposure during spring break. We know it's a big travel time. And so we're implementing an optional universal testing initiative that will be available to staff and students alike. Um, the staff and students will have, um, the option to pick up a two-pack of tests that they will then have instructions attached to it, um, that will tell them how to use those tests. The, um, first one will be the rapid antigen at home test, the first one to do that, um, the Monday or, um, the Sunday evening or the Monday morning, uh, return from spring break. We will also have the tests available for students and the reporting if they do test positive is all going to be included, given the instructions. For students, um, the optional universal testing for spring break, that's saving goals to minimize, um, transmission. Um, for our elementary kids, there will be three options for picking tests up. They can pick them up at a test from their child's school on either, um, April sixth through eighth, so that we brought for spring break. Um, they can pick up a test from the, here at the administration building, April fourth to the eighth during our regular business hours. Or they can complete a form, an online form that will provide and request that their child be given a test to bring home prior to spring break. For our middle school and our high school students, um, the options will be pick up the test from school in that same timeframe of April sixth through eight, pick it up here at the district, or again, use the online form. So with the, um, two tests, if they only choose to participate, they should only report positive, um, cases using an online notification, um, tool. And students who test negative should not report anything. And of course, maybe in schools, we'll have those instructions very clear in the information that goes home to parents. Dr. Reynolds, did I miss anything as I quickly gave that information?
Nope, uh, that is, uh, absolutely correct. We really appreciate our partners with the Puget Sound Educational Service District who have been coordinating, um, the, the testing, uh, availa- or the test availability. Uh, fortunately, we have not even had to, well, Donnie, you've been the pickup, uh, coming out of, uh, coming home or, or, or coming to work, uh, you swing by and get our shipment or our allotment, I should say. But, um, we have not needed an allotment for about a month. And so when we called down and requested, um, a test kit for every single student and staff member, they said, no problem. So we're excited to be able to offer this to our community. Um, not trying to alarm anyone, we're not expecting anything major, but, uh, we also, uh, want to keep, uh, learning happening in our classrooms, keep our students and staff safe and finish the year strong.
Good. Okay, so just to clarify, because I see people on the chat are asking, we, we're going to have to move the high cap update to the April twenty first, twenty first meeting. Due to a lot of time. Um, okay, do we want to break right now or do we want to set it? Short break. So it is seven thirty-five and we're back in. Five minutes, so great. Okay, thank you. People's meeting, okay. All right, everyone, um, we're back. Are we on? Thank you. Um, now we're getting the agenda, so work policy eighteen hundred OE six budgeting slash financial planning, budget assumptions for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. This is an item for discussion.
So this is your update on budget assumptions for twenty-two, twenty-three, um, not your quarterly update, which will come next month in April. So just want to remind the board that there's a bit of a distinction between those two items. So, um, this is again, an information discussion, um, out of the time. Tyler, are you ready?
One second, I'm getting my screen up.
Did you want?
Yeah.
You got it? Okay, you're driving.
Right. Uh, so tonight we're gonna talk about, uh, this is a planning update. So one of the things that we're putting into budget for next year were considerations that we're making for legislation, legislative session ended. Close to our last meeting, didn't have a lot of information, we're still waiting for a lot of information to come out, but we have a, we have a pretty solid framework of what we're looking at in terms of legislative. Um, we'll have a very solid, robust discussion with OSPI on the thirty-first. Thirty-first. So tonight we're gonna cover enrollment projections. Uh, we're gonna talk about actual enrollment where we are, uh, at this point in the year. We're gonna talk about reductions as terms of thinking about the structure of the reductions, distribution of the reductions and how, how some of that thinking went into place. Um, we're gonna talk about some of the estimated effects of state legislation. We, we only have estimates at this point because the states are still trying to wrap their head around. Um, the agencies are still trying to wrap their head around what the legislators have provided for us. And then some of the considerations that we're putting into the plan. So as we've talked many times, um, about enrollment projections, historically, um, we hit our peak in eighteen nineteen and we had started to project a slight decline over the next several years. Um, we actually started down that trend nineteen, twenty, and then hitting into pandemic, uh, it took a steeper dive. Uh, and then based on the enrollment loss for twenty-one dash twenty-two school year, it's starting to level out a little bit in terms of the projection. But we're still looking at coming in well below where we've been for the last several years. As we're looking forward into the current year, um, this chart shows the month-to-month enrollments, uh, that we've been reporting to OSPI, uh, through the front. We have seen a slight uptick, uh, in enrollment this year. It is distributed across the entire system, so there isn't any one specific grade band or building or level that is benefiting more than the other in terms of enrollment. But it is, it is a good indicator that we've kind of hit the bottom and we're stabilizing in terms of enrollment. Um, uh, one of the processes that we do on an annual basis is starting, once we distribute staffing to the buildings in January and February, uh, we pull out a spreadsheet where the building secretaries and registrars take a look at the enrollment projections versus the number of actual students that are registering for next year. Um, when we look at K five as a system, we are, uh, kindergarten is still slightly low. It tends to lag a little bit just because families are still registering and getting in. We are well above ninety percent, uh, accuracy for, uh, kindergarten. We are hitting ninety-five to a hundred and one, a hundred and one point five percent, uh, for one through five in terms of projections. So we are spot on, uh, in terms of our own projections for first through fifth grade. So very good indications for what we're looking at for next year. Also a good indicator that we're making wise choices in terms of staffing because we're hitting the right types of class sizes that we want. Um, and we're not seeing significantly large classes. Um, we may see one or two classes, uh, throughout the system in different grade levels where we may have a couple kids above the, the class size limit, but we're not stacking kids that, you know, we don't have kindergarten classes of thirty-one or first grade of thirty-one. So, um, we're still gonna be well within, uh, our K three class size requirements for the state when it comes to enrollment.
But we will be bigger than what we normally were.
Yeah.
On our side.
Yeah, we won't, yeah, we're not, we're not gonna be stacking kids in every classroom and making it just untendedly large. Um, we're gonna be hitting our class size targets. Teachers won't see any huge significant changes. There may be some buildings where enrollment comes in where we do see a little bit larger. And we may have to see some split grade band classes, like a two-three split. Um, or, uh, I know for High Cap at Lake Ridge, we're looking at a four-five split just because of how the numbers were distributed.
Which we have some of that already.
Uh, another option that we have, if a specific classroom gets a little bit bigger, uh, or one building fills up faster than the others, we can move students over for a year to a building with lower enrollment to make sure that we're smoothing uh, class size in those rankings. So we have tools that allow us to make sure that we're being responsible and flexible and that we're not gonna be just blowing out of the classroom. Um, I had all these talking points in terms of enrollment. Um, pandemic was such an outlier, uh, we did need to come to the board for guidance about how to project. Um, we were more conservative in our projections for twenty-two, twenty-three as we're looking forward. Um, but we're starting to hit those targets and it looks like we're gonna be very, very close to what we projected. Um, overall, as I mentioned, uptick slightly, we've increased by thirty-five student FD, uh, and, and I mentioned the kindergarten and elementary moments. Um, any questions about enrollment?
The question. Sorry.
When, when do we, uh, go back to less Kendrick? Is there a thought, is this? I, I understand the complexity here, but.
Um, normally we go back to Dr. Kendrick in four-year cycles, um, because that's usually when we start taking a look at the larger systemic facility kind of needs, um, in terms of enrollment projections and stability. Because once you, you provide a ten-year outlook, but once you really get past four years, then that crystal ball is more like porous than glass.
And Dr. Kendrick did provide, um, some information, I think, come in the middle of pandemic.
Yeah, there was.
Being that outlier.
Yeah. Um, and I honestly, I think it would probably serve us better if we wait a year or two past the pandemic so that we see some more stabilized enrollment numbers before we really go back to Dr. Kendrick and try to.
So twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five?
Twenty-four, twenty-five is when we really start to go back to Dr. Kendrick because that's when we're, by that point, we've got more stabilized enrollment numbers, but also we're gonna be looking more at, uh, those longer range facility plans and doing a more substantial update to the.
Right, that's what I was thinking about too. Yeah, so there'll be eight hundred kids down from our peak at that.
Yeah. So, uh, that would provide us a pretty significant look at how do we, how do we update that thing?
Yeah.
I guess my question is, my question is, when, when we say we're, we're on track to meet projections, we're in this grade band, does that mean that like we sort of lost this chunk of kids? And maybe this is a question for Dr. Kendrick, but that we lost this chunk of kids due to COVID and moving and so forth? Um, or people, you know, moving to other schools? And then were, the shape is matching the projections like since then? Or does this mean we're actually like getting back to the numbers that we?
So the shape is matching.
The shape is matching the production.
The shape is matching production.
Thank you.
Yes, we're on track to meet projections.
Right.
Um, so we're not, we're not gonna jump eight hundred kids back up where we were previously.
Right.
But we are very close to what we're projecting for the enrollment for next year.
And just because eight hundred kids is a few years from now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right.
It was my fault.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Um, so, uh, touching on, uh, the reductions in January, we, January, when we brought the enrollment projections to the board uh, with the projected revenue, looking at next. with the projected revenue looking at next year, and the staffing model that we had this year, we felt very strongly that we needed to take a pretty significant effort to right-size the district in terms of enrollments and staffing. So we brought approximately $4 million reduction package to the board. Included recent non-staffing costs, staff costs, administrative costs to meet this new enrollment-driven environment that we're, we're looking at. And this is a really, the first time that we have a chance to, to structure ourselves to meet the new reality that we're in. Took a look at the proportionality of the reductions that we proposed previously. In terms of the certificated reductions, it does represent 63% of the reduction. But overall, the certificated staff body, it's a little over 7% of the reductions. When we take a look at the management team, it's 14% of the reductions. It represents 12 and a half, or almost 12% of the administrative staff body. And when I say like the, the staff group, it's the entire leadership team or the entire certificated union body or the, the classified body. And when we look at the classified reductions, we're looking at about 60% of reductions, but again, that's about seven and a half percent of that staffing group. And the non-staffed related cost is about 7% of the reductions. And there's only so much that we can really pull off. And I will say that Andrew Reeves and Tony have been doing a phenomenal job of looking at utilities and the contracts and services that we have, and really working hard to find ways to, to get some cuts throughout the system. Some of it we have to do looking forward into the future because of energy compliance. But some of it is really like, hey, let's, let's look at some options that we have. And not only is it going to save us money, but it's actually going to be easier for staff to use a lot of the new things that we're looking at. So.
So.
Good things all around.
Kind of a non-staff kind of question. Two years from now, maybe three, is there, is it, is there a value in turning down a school? Kind of closing a mothball in a school?
That is, that is a hard, that is a hard question.
And I'm thinking three years from now for that, for that reason.
It is looking at that long-range planning of where the enrollment is and at what levels the enrollment is. As, as you see in this presentation, we, you know, we talk about that it's at the elementaries, it's been in our K8. And so some of it is, what is that trajectory for those, you know, grades specifically? Are the, the kindergartners starting to be a bigger, a bigger group? And that is a long conversation. That's not something you do.
I agree. And that's why I, I raise it as a, as a part of the thought process. So part of the thought process would be, two to three years from now, do we mothball a school? A year or two later, do we rebuild that school as a new school? Right? So you, you'd have both opportunities if we're, these are projections, so we don't know how far down in enrollment really are going to be. But there really is an opportunity to put kids into right-sized schools that wouldn't be overflowing, rebuild a new school and be right-sized for when we know the cycle changes. And that could also be a significant non-stop savings. Now, I know, I appreciate you don't have to do it now. That's good, but I think that is a big chunk that could be put out later.
I think it would be also beneficial, and I'm not suggesting we do it. But when we're looking at that also, that we look at whether or not, you know, three or four K5s, a seven, seven, eight, or I'm sorry, yeah, K5, 6, 8, and 9, 12 is really the way we want to be. I mean, there are local districts close by that do K4, and then 5, 6, and then 7, 8, and then 9, 12, or something like that. So I mean, there's, there's pros and cons, and it could also be in terms of shifting numbers, you know, spreading them out more. But I know, I, I know where you're getting at in terms of, you know, that could aid us in, in building schools. So I just think that to, to have that conversation, have that all at once. Yeah, it is a long conversation. I can tell you that I have been part of that conversation previously, and it is no less than probably almost a two-year process to get to the decision of the action of what are you going to do? Either mothballing the school, as Director DeSousa said, or reconfiguring. And those can all be part of that conversation as you look at what your capacity is. But it is, it is definitely, in my experience, it's been about a two, a two-school-year conversation.
I also just learned a term recently about pivot school, right? So you move the kids so that you can rebuild the school, and then you move them back.
I just, I just wanted to add that adding up that fourth elementary school was a huge selling point for the success of the bond that passed in 2014. And as we were talking a few minutes ago about getting Dr. Kendrick's update and thinking about doing an update to the plan, I think that would be an excellent opportunity to take it to the community and say, here's what we're thinking. Here's an opportunity to reconvene some of the committee and/or the community at large and say, here's the existing plan, here's some things that have happened since the plan. Let's make, let's do an update.
I mean, I think it makes sense because at the point where the proposal failed was the three big elementaries, that's all the families that had just gone through these crazy big elementary school classes, what happened then, and portables in the, you know, 2008 to 2012. And, and we're looking for something different, but now we have frankly, yeah, so it's, it's getting input early.
Yeah. So there's plenty of opportunities for us to expand these conversations and involve the community in that kind of planning process. Because if we really do want to do it well and make sure that we're setting ourselves up for success, the success of the planning committee that we just had was phenomenal, and we want to make sure that we have all that planned.
And that's, that, that plan is almost updated at this point.
Yeah.
Well, it occurred.
No, 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 not pointing fingers, just saying, for life, it is.
But.
Don't disagree.
Sorry. While we're trying to bring it back.
Yes, thank you.
So reductions are weighted more heavily towards the elementary schools. We know that, we admit that, that's where a lot of the enrollment loss occurred as that enrollment wave has been moving out of the elementaries through the middle school, and it's now into high school. There's potential that we could see another wave coming up. But right now, the wave is without, and we really need to make those adjustments. The reductions, and I know Director Battery is going to be addressing the methodology of reductions on the next-gen item, but it really, we really did spend a significant amount of time by looking at enrollment numbers in specific classes, registrations in the offered courses, and our core subjects are not being used in terms of how we're affecting the reductions.
Maybe just at the end, like, like for non-core subjects, what was the lowest or the highest enrollment record that had to be cut? Like, I mean, just to get a sense of.
Usually the cutoff was about 20. If it was below 20, then it would be kind of on the table. If it was below 15, then it was just kind of, can we stack it? Can we find some other option to combine with something else so that we can make a class of 20 or more up to 30?
Sometimes it depends on, is it an absolute singleton? Like, it's only one in the schedule of that course? So that's where we definitely look, look at the stacking option. Can we put?
The guitar.
Guitar and advanced guitar so that we then, you know, we do have enough kids in both of those, but we can stack it and make one and still offer it. We've had that happen a lot in many of the type.
Is there any math and science courses that were not able to be offered because of reductions that you're aware of?
No.
Okay.
So in terms of reductions versus attrition, when we brought it in January, the official cutoff date for announcing retirements and receiving the, the recognition bonus, for lack of a better term, for early notification was February 1st. So we didn't really have a solid picture of who was resigning, who was retiring, who was going to be asking for leaves. Since then, we've gotten a significant amount of resignations, retirements, and leaves, which, as we saw last 14, significantly reduced the amount of staffing that we have to affect through the RIF process. Because we have to account for those reductions after we count for resignations, retirements, and leaves. And no RIF is ever going to attain the full projected value because it depends on the staff mix of the salary cost of people who are resigning or retiring, or in certain cases, shifting funding sources. We may be pulling staff out of general ed and putting more of their time into CTE programming. And so that's fully funded through state funding, or pulling them out and putting them on the capital technology level, which is a different funding source. We're not totally reducing the number of hours, but we're reducing the money that's coming out of the general fund. Or there's higher grade enrollment, enrollment in grade band. We do need to add a high-cap teacher because the number of students that tested in put fourth and fifth grade at very large numbers at Lake Ridge. And so we do need to add a position to make sure that we're not over-staffing those classrooms to meet the, the educational needs. So there are, there's always going to be shifting, and we're never going to get that full value we project for. Estimated effects of state legislation. So.
Please note estimated.
Estimated, big word, estimated. And some of this is ongoing funding, some of this is one-time funding. So enrollment stabilization, this is a one-time funding. This is the second time they've offered it to us, but in each of legislative sessions, each bill knows that it is a one-time offering. We will be receiving 50% of the revenue lost by comparing 1920 enrollment and 2021 enrollment, 2122 enrollment, sorry, in the 2122 prototypical model. So we will be receiving about 4.08, 2.08 million to backfill the shortfalls, which is a little bit more than what we lost in the enrollment-related decline for the current year. So essentially.
Did you just said four or two?
I, I misspoke.
It's two.
I said four, it's two.
But just confirming.
My brain is moving faster than my nap, so I always, this happens. The staffing allocations to the prototypical model, this is probably one of the best things that came out of this legislative session. The recognition that districts are significantly underfunded for nurses, counselors, psychologists, and social workers. And it provides additional funding through the prototypical model. There will be staff compliance for these positions. We don't know exactly what that looks like yet. OSPI released some FAQs on it today. I read through it, and I still don't know what they're going to be asking us to comply with. I'm not sure if they know what they're supposed to be complying with yet. But I took a look at what the new ratio would fund versus what the old ratio would fund using the projected enrollment for next year. So it will increase, and this is the great part, it will increase the nurses by 266%. However, that only funds us at 1.6 nurses for the entire district.
And we're at six.
And we're at six nurses. We will be, our psychologists went up from 0.09 to 0.25 funded for the district, and we have 5.6 psychologists. Part of that 0.6 is a contract agency hire for special education. But as you can see, we will be funded under the new model for 13 FTE. We currently have 20 FTE.
I think it says 3.5.
That's the increase, that's the change. So we will be getting three and a half additional FTE. The funding will provide 13, we'll get, which is an increase of three and a half. So we will be backfilled on our spending by about $420,000, which is good. The ratio ticks up over the next three years. So the model increases a little bit every year until that third year in which it levels out. So there will be some additional funding related to this in the outer years. And we'll talk a little bit more about recommendations when we get to the, the plan consideration.
That funding is more than just IPD use.
Yeah, it's more than just IPD. We do get one additional year of levy stabilization for calendar year 2023 using the school year 19-20 enrollments. So one more year at a higher rate. We don't, haven't seen yet what the state is proposing for an IPD inflation or an inflationary measure for the per-student number for our levy calculations. There is an entire, it's entirely possible that we could bump up against the ceiling of our proof authority, and there might be some money left on the table.
So the, the effect of destabilization for levies is about $1 million, is that right?
Probably closer to $800,000. I mean, if, if we get the five and a half percent IPD that they put in the COLA, and they attach that to the per-student rate, we could be looking at a levy of about 12 million, which is what the voters approved, which would be close to about $800,000 more than what we're, what we would normally be getting.
And when we're managing to a budget for this year, we are including that $800,000.
So. To a certain extent, to a certain extent, because when I did the projections, I ran it using enrollment. I, under the assumption that we would have levy stabilization, but I was looking at a 2% increase, not a five and a half percent increase. So if we do get a significantly higher per-student increase on our levy rates, we could be seeing a little bit higher revenue on the levy than we had anticipated.
But I guess my point is after the next year.
Yeah.
We're going to like go down 800 to 900, whatever.
And we, and as, as we have mentioned several times before, this is, the RIF is not, this is not going to be the last time that we take a look at reducing in force. There are going to be ripple effects for potentially a couple of years. So it's, it's challenging, it's hard to have these discussions, but we also need to be aware that we are making plans based on a levy stabilization.
So I don't, I don't understand the IPD connection to the levy dollar step. My, my first question first is, do I care that I don't understand that? Like, is that such a nuanced thing that?
It's a very nuanced thing.
We're good though.
Okay. So just remember.
I'm not, no, I understand IPD, and I understand levy stabilization. I'm not a accountant, I don't need to be, so go ahead.
All, so we started off at 2,500 per student, currently 2,700 per student, 2,740. If we get five and a half percent, it could go significantly higher.
Got it, okay.
So the amount of money per student, and we have a, we were able to claim a higher number of students, means that we're potentially going to bump up against the ceiling of our authority. So. All the.
But these are goodies, right?
There are some. The transportation refunding bill that, there was a bill that would allow us to recover all of the special education, the Canadian Intel and foster-related transportation costs. There are some provisions that did make it through where it would be more of a safety net application for transportation, but we're not sure if we're supposed to be putting it under special education safety net or transportation safety net. And what does that mean? And they only provided $11 million for the entire state? So. Not very much, right? So I had Director Rock take a look at how much we spend on special education and Canadian Inte transportation, and it was close to $400,000. So timing a little worse, and has that $11 million is not going to stretch very far. So those are some of the things that are out there. The other big thing that's coming through is a five and a half percent IPD increase for salary allocations and, and SOF allocations, materials supplies, and operating costs. So the money that we get from the state that is intended to cover insurance, books, keeping the lights on. Keeping the lights on. So that's gonna be a five and a half percent increase. And in terms of. Planning considerations, any, any questions about legislative updates? Alright, awesome. In terms of the levy, another year of stabilization is great, you know, it, this is what we need to help kind of. Smooth this out into the future, I wish we had a two year level stabilization, that would have been awesome, but we will, we can make it work. But it doesn't fix the underlying structural issues of the school district lines and levies. Some questions have been raised about what, what's the effect of the levies since McQuary? If we had the pre-McQuary levy rate, we would be looking at a levy of twenty three million dollars. Versus the eleven that we can collect. So it is a significant drop from what we have. We also have significantly more staff in our staffing model above what is allocated in prototypical model. And when the IPD that five and a half percent is coming in from the state, that is for funded staff only. So when we're looking at, and historically we passed along to staff. Even though they're not funded in the model, the percentage increase that we receive from the state, because we got increasing amounts tacked onto our levy. That doesn't happen anyway. And so as we're looking at the money that's coming from the state, five and a half percent is not going to spread evenly. Across all the staff. And so we need to figure out how we're gonna balance this, this incoming. To make sure that we are providing the COLA because everybody's costs are going up, right? Staff, we need to be adjusted for that. But what is the sustainable unsurvivable increase for the district? Health and safety staffing, and these are recommendations essentially from staff to the board. Because we have more staff still in our model than is provided by the model, our recommendation is that for year one, we do not increase staff. This provides us some additional flexibility because essentially it's paying the district back for the staff that we have staffed above the model. We can definitely take a look at years two and three and what those staffing increases will look like. Within the model and can we be more targeted and specific in how we want to approach any staffing increases? Do we want to drive more money into counseling? Do we want to drive money into having a dedicated funded social worker within the district?
So you're saying because we're already using this percentage from our levy dollars to pay for more staff? I mean, I guess I'm looking at it right now, especially with the reductions that we have now and that we're facing in the future. Kind of, until that stops, I, I don't know how we can justify. Increasing that, I mean if we're still at twenty and we get funded for thirteen. Again, it's, it's again, that first year is really no increases now as time mentioned. That prototypical model does have, I believe, three year.
Ramp up.
Ramp up to it, so as that adjusts, then each year the. Staff will need to bring a recommendation to the board as to how much is that adjustment and what is the recommendation? Because it is going to be very specific in categories that you can utilize again as well.
Yeah.
But for this twenty two, twenty three.
We have a demonstrated need to continue with the reductions in staff, that's, that's a given. We can't carry on the way we have been, there's no real significant increases to funding beyond that change for the model and the COLA. And even that COLA is more directed to supporting our staff than it is to making the district. You know, giving us more flexibility in terms of adjusting our program. Identified needs, so this is usually when we come to the board and say, we've been studying things as we go along in the planning process. We're reducing here, we're thinking of changing this type of programming, we recommend these funding reservations. Here's where I come to say, we have a specific need that we've identified, that we need to fund, and we plan to do it with existing funding. Pollut records has become such a significant problem for the district in terms of costs and outside legal fees. That we fully believe that we can fund a half time staff position using the existing budget. And pay into our internal staff member, which is a part of our core team. And keeping that money in-house rather than sending it outside for legal fees to. Be redacted and dealt with. So it is, it's a recommendation that is going to save us a lot of heartache and trouble, but it's not adding funding.
Just to be clear, are you saying take someone that's already part of the administration or like hire someone?
Hire a half time person using the money that we have been paying. So we would be hiring a half time physician, and this is something that. We need to do. And then.
And we need to be talking to our legislators about. The whole public disclosure request law.
Yeah.
And why we're putting the bills for that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, no worries. I, it's been a very long week, I'm pretty tired and I'm getting a little silly right now.
Everybody.
So. The last thing that we do need to think about and we haven't been thinking about it is the maintenance of our fund balance. And how we budget the fund balance. So our recommendation for the board coming in is we haven't really, we have a policy that says we'll maintain a specific percentage. But what we haven't done in the past is set a reservation on it. Or a restriction on it. And there is options within how we classify our fund balance. That the board can essentially put an earmark on it and say, this is for fund balance purpose only. So that is something that we can be taking a look at as we start preparing the fund balance. Which would mean that we as a district cannot dip into that without coming to the board saying, hey, we need another three hundred thousand dollars to make this work.
So hypothetically, like my understanding, like for the enrollment stabilization, like the one time, like two million dollar. And it's plus like a balanced budget, isn't taking that into accounts on a revenue side? So like if the board like were to decide like to earmark that, right, like for restoring like the general fund balance. That would get us to a little over three percent, right, like on like an annual basis, like that sort of idea?
Yeah, yeah, it would give, it would give the board something to say. We are interested in maintaining the fund balance, we are interested in maintaining cash flow reserves, we are putting an earmark in a box around this money, don't touch it. It's not for general use. So that is something that we can be taking a look at, we haven't done it in the past because we haven't really needed to. But as we've been dealing with this funding need over the last several years, as we've been following our, our policy. Regarding fund balance, this is something that other districts do.
Just real quickly, and just sort of like building on a comment from David, like sort of the long range plan, like four or five years out, like probably a refresh. On the demographics, like I think, and perhaps some of the, the questions are like, how do we like? What does the path look like to be where we want to be perhaps in four to five years on a fund balance size? Just for the cost of like financing, like any capital improvements, right? And like what's the sort of?
Yeah.
Percentage to get back up?
Yeah, so when we're looking at financing capital improvements, a lot of it has to do with our capital projects fund, right? That's really what we're. The, the credit rate.
Yeah.
So several years ago, I actually talked with people in Louis. About how credit ratings are generated, and it's a lot more than just our, our cash flow and fund balance. A lot of it has to do with the stability of our funding. And we have very stable funding on, and within Washington in general and in Mercer specifically. So while we do need to be cognizant of it, it is not the, the core factor. Within how credit ratings are developed.
I think we've got multiple basic reasons to build up a fund balance there now, a future bond right now.
I mean, I think, I mean. I, it just, it seems clear to me when we dipped into our reserves to pay a team for COVID costs and we got. Return from COVID because of COVID enrollment, so. It seems like a new bringer, I don't understand, I mean, obviously the board needs to approve that, I, I don't. I mean, I know people love to have more money in their own pockets, but that's just not responsible. So more to come as the budget is developed and as the board is updated on that process. And of course, eventually the approval by the board of the budget and those. Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I think we never, we, we had some talk initially about a floor on the fund balance, so now this would be reviving that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good, thank you very much, this is, this is very, and very comprehensive, I like, I like the detail and the. Assuming no knowledge on our board.
Thank you.
Nice to be able to reset that way sometimes, thank you.
Any other questions? But if I'm, again, it's not in action.
Financial Administration Draft Resolution seven zero eight, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, Reduced Education Program. Certificated in second reading, this is for action. Um, so we did hear from you the last time that I presented this, there, there's no change in the proposed reductions. The documents themselves are being changed from here, just to give you a little bit more context, because I understood that was the request. Happy to, if you have questions, do ask. But looking at the process, we started basically with the hole we needed to fill, so that came with directions from finances, so this is the dollar amount. From there, we then looked at our limited positions, which are just those who are backfilling those before on leave. So those are not ongoing community position for certificate staff, so they have no rights with respect to those. So the only briefing that you see here are people who are, are actually going to lose their position, which is why I emphasized last time. This is not an easy conversation, because each of these number represent real people who are colleagues and friends. And who know our students and are best for this community. You need a small reduction to impact our staff, and so that's, if this is a challenging process. And we do our best to sort of adjust things and find alternative pathways to make this reduction as low as possible. While at the same time recognizing that we do need to be physically responsible. So after sort of back taking out the limited people, we also then waited until our notice of resignations. We had a February one sort of notice for those to come back off leave. And it's also a date where incentivized certificate staff should let us know if they're going to be moving on. To either retirement or other locations, and they get a fiscal incentive for early notification. So that's a good judge of sort of where we are, so we didn't sort of come up with this list until after that day. And so we, a lot, there's more reductions in our system than just reflected here because they're not backfilling those many people who are on leave. And many people retired, of course, there are some people that we do have to backfill, that we can't just not have any psychologist, for example. They're, they're essential physicians, but where possible, if it was in the area of briefing, the reductions are taken into consideration with. Resignations and leaves versus actually heading that person. So looking at the high school, they were given an allocation initially of about three point three FTE reduction, is my understanding, if I recall. After receiving the, they waited until the March third student registration, because we really did try to have students' interests. And student voice guide where reduction would occur. Because we were trying not to reduce our course offerings where, in areas that there was a student desire and need. So following the March third course offerings, we determined sort of the, within the limits of the CBA. Because we have a max of, you can't have more than thirty people in a class. So we targeted that class between twenty and thirty, so that gives us some flux and a cushion if people want to shift. And when we actually get to registration, so we look at our classes and we try to populate our twenty to thirty. And then that meant the classes that were below eighteen, we. We did not staff individual sections of less than eighteen students per single day classes. And they're typically eliminated, or as Ty referenced earlier, they were stacked, so you'd have like guitar and honors guitar stacked together. And the ultimately, did I say wrong? Okay, it could be on guitar, but we could start offering honors. Sorry, people can use guitar a lot better than me. Sorry, it'd be on guitar, I apologize. So for example, we had a, there are some levels of world language courses where we just didn't have enough students. And so instead of offering that higher level, we combined it with a lower level, I'm not going to try to identify that a little bit. So ultimately, it resulted in a two point four reduction in staffing. And this allows us to maintain staffing of both existing electric programs and pathways as well as continued commitment to student graduation requirements. And this is from our general education, we did, we'll try to creatively using other funding streams such as CTE or CCR. Depending on which era you were in, just to see like are there offerings there that would. Meet the interest of our students, so that was sort of the high school process, it was a process that really was driven by student interest. But also trying to keep as many of our staff members whole as possible. We'll say that high school had additional adjustments because there were reductions at the middle school. Just because of lower home, which caused a middle school, some middle school teachers to shift just because of the, the process that we have to go to with seniority. Where they shift and will displace someone at the high school, and some of it of what I described last time, though, like for instance, you could have. A math teacher who has alternative endorsement, and actually the person that actually ends up with. Fewer hours or not a job, potentially, which is awful, is not actually. The, in the departments identified, because they can bug someone else because of their endorsement and superiority. That's just the way the process works in education, that's consistent with our CBA. But I do not want to make light of the fact that those shifts themselves, even those people who maintain that whole FTE, if they are teaching at middle school. They may not be super excited to also be at elementary or high school. And so that's just, this is a hard process for our system to have to go through, so everyone is, will feel that in that. Does anyone have questions about the high school?
Just real quick, is that like an opportunity where like instructional coaches, like maybe reach out, like when, you know, an endorsement changes and. The teacher is, not endorsement changes, but the teacher is teaching a course that they perhaps like haven't caught in a while, right? Because of changes.
Yeah, so instructional coaches are used to support those who change, change even levels within elementary school, for example. And they're, but they are available to everyone, but that is a particular era where we do try to utilize our instructive coaches to support that. Because they will have perhaps more understanding, we, we at times have involuntary transfer situations, because that's what it's called. Also set up a mentor for the big shift, where, and all parties are interested. So that in addition to access to instructional coach, we have assigned mentors as well.
Walter spoke at the high school pack today as well about some of this process, I, I thought they were very thoughtful about it. Stacking courses was interesting as well, because in the stack situation, both those courses were under eighteen and both could have been cut. But stacking allows the preservation of a course in the hopes that in the future enrollment continues to increase. It preserves competency and teachers that way as well, so it, it. You know, we, we didn't, it's a very thoughtful process that they go to to preserve the types of courses our kids. I need to have mathematics courses and same way are similarly stacked as needed, so it made a lot of sense. I think also, I will say, it's very hard to find anyone who does not impact kids. It's everybody you talk to in a school district. Classified, certified bus drivers, my, my son, I will always remember. The bus driver says, calls us up and says, your son is a, he got a flat and he's. and he's on his bike and he's riding on the street and he needs help. You know, so there is not a single person doesn't touch our kids, you know, very loving and real way. So we appreciate it very much. And I, I just, you know, I do not want to be the person picking and choosing on these cuts. So uh, my heart goes out to uh the people who are making these cuts and I you hear firsthand that any pack what happens when these cuts are made. So my my heart definitely goes out to that. So with that, I will move that we approve resolution number seven oh eight uh this evening, this publish.
I second.
I did want to ask a question on we we've heard a lot from from librarians and from families and from kids um about the like the cuts in librarian hours. And I know that last year we were kind of able to pull this thing off where we were using S R funding to fund some of the librarians' hours because what they were doing was social related to social emotional recovery from COVID. I know that those S R dollars are not available anymore for that purpose. And I I know that you, I'm sure you have done, as you say, like creative. As we said, creative, something creative, um, creative funding stream, looking for creative funding streams. Um, but I just wanted to ask that question since since we've got so many emails and so forth about it, like are there any creative funding streams that we haven't explored yet that that have any potential to help with like restoring some of those hours or some of those programs, I guess?
I think the answer to that is is probably a no, but that doesn't mean we're not going to use creative scheduling resources to support um the work that um particularly because Molly is the one who's spoken to you several times and and we do know that she is been very integral in the mindfulness um that really became a culture at Northwood because of Ms. Farnish. And so uh working with the site administration to, you know, what some of the creative scheduling that might be available for um individual schools, which might be a little bit different at each of the four elementaries. And sometimes that's okay because the mindfulness that does occur at Northwood is Northwood, that's very much part of the culture. And there are different things that occur at the other schools. So we are going to work to be as creative as we can with the scheduling and the um the dollars that will be utilized in each of the the sites to support um the culture and climate that they have created. But there are no more.
Cut along them on, I think, um, maybe think about how, David, I totally agree with you. So thank you for mentioning like um in our school district, everybody really impacts their student and we love our bus drivers as well. Uh, we're very blessed to have the bus come around our house. So as we, this is, these cuts are based on like the current the people that we know that are going to leave and their current budget situation and not a creative but uh fundings, but let's say if we uh if there were more people who retired and we didn't feel that. What is that process for us to um feel back these kind of things? Is there a priority that we build the librarian first? Do we build the?
So what you would do, it would depend on, to answer your question, uh, the way we're at work is there's like, it creates a recall pool. Um, and for specific positions based on the endorsement, the most senior person would be offered the opportunity to be recalled. So assuming that you were restoring a, let's, I'm just gonna I think I said, let's say the world language was cut and the the person was actually lost their position and we were suddenly opening a world language course for which they have endorsement. Then that person would be the, even if they're, they would be the first in because they're in the recall pool before even the other people. Does that make sense?
So it's clearly your seniority.
Is being something.
Seniority and their credential.
Yes.
So that world language teacher, if we had to open another kindergarten section, because kindergarten really boomed over the summer, that world language teacher would not be in the seniority for a kindergarten position. That would then be looking at um any seniority that would have been impacted. But it it's not here because we're, you know, we're only doing the elementary librarian positions. We've not had to do elementary setting.
So to answer your question and maybe I did that answer your question or?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to know, I mean, uh, the creative funding, which is like, you know, I would, I don't think we're gonna get, but we still don't know who in the end, we don't know who might, you know, uh, retire, quit, or the other.
So if there's, let's assume that there's a resignation that occurs. Uh, we would, if it's, if there's someone in who is being adversely affected and they have the appropriate endorsement and seniority, they would have the first opportunity to fill that position. So except you're asking about creative funding and that is not tethered to, is is not driven by a specific. We now don't have a second grade teacher, for example. Uh, I'm just thinking that 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 would be something where we would look at the core competencies of our staff and um we have an obligation to open positions. For for staff, if it's not something that requires a specific enforcement, so then all M I A members can apply um accordingly. But again, we will, we do try to be creative. So let's just hypothetically, if there were additional questions, I'd like to tell them that's something that we wanted to offer at state Northwood, then perhaps it's something that we do, that would be a a decision by uh at the school and district level, assuming there's funding. Um, but we are continuing to work for creative ways. And with respect to if there are additional people, like right now, we have not reduced all the contact time required for librarians to provide library services with students. So that has been preserved because, you know, the reductions are being driven by the faculty to set the rest of students in their review sections.
I think we also got on the complexity this type put out earlier that the the cuts, the FTE reductions might not match the budget based on salary variability and things like that. So it's probably a long complexity, I'm sure.
Thank you.
So there's a motion on the table. Can we get a second?
We did get a second. Um, so all all in favor of approving board policy?
Resolution.
Sorry, all of, you know, like, how old have you been proving draft, sorry, uh, resolution seven oh eight twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three reduced education program certificate impact? Please say aye.
Oh, aye.
All goes, please say aye. That passes by five, deserve. Next board policy eighteen hundred O V eleven facilities and capital assets project.
I'm smiling, Tony. This is his.
You're keeping.
You're in reserve.
Oh, thank you, Tony.
We did want to um give the board an update on capital projects, particularly um in life, some of the conversations that occurred since we passed our next six year cycle levy. So I'm going to turn it over to Tony and Ty and you might have noticed they've got some pictures.
Great pictures.
Pictures are a thousand words. Yes.
All right. So we're gonna go through the list of uh projects we've got going on this summer and just kind of give you a real high level update of of where we're at and um kind of what what the process is looking like. So um first slide, electric buses. We're excited. We put P O in for our first two electric buses. Uh, we should see them sometime uh this fall. We're thinking October, Novemberish. Uh, we are working on the infrastructure for charging. Uh, we currently have enough power to run the chargers for the first couple of rounds of buses. That plus one. I think Dan and Deborah Hager remember it was an elementary school down there. So that infrastructure is still there. So we still had some power down there, um, capacity. So we're able to to start the first round with that. We will, we have reached out to P S E and and I apologize if there are other directors that were at my address. I will. We have reached out to P S E and our electrical engineer, uh, and we're working on what that's gonna look like as we do move forward or exploring some grant possibilities and, you know, things like that as well. So that's, that's exciting. So we will be working on getting that infrastructure in the summer. Uh, Mary Way Pool, uh, we were really lucky. We we received a ninety seven thousand uh uh ninety seven thousand dollar grant. Uh, it was, it's a hundred percent funded. There's no matching. It's straight ninety seven thousand dollars for planning. So uh, we received that about a month ago or and we will be using that as we move forward with our our levy monies for for future planning on how we spend that money coming into the pool.
It's also a really good indicator that we would be highly successful in getting that two million dollar grant, matching grant that we will be applying for. Because if they give us the planning grant, it's a good indication that we'll be really successful in applying for that.
We had two million in the levy and then that would then roll us to a full four million dollars on projects that we'd be able to do. So we will be working with O C A and our our uh engineers and and our architects and people like that that we have to help us with those those plans. Uh, library culinary arts project. Um, so this is kind of a two parter. Um, we we've, in my world, we lumped them together just for for planning purposes and for construction purposes. Um, we put together just a couple of of um drawings here just so you can kind of see the second one on the library, I think, shows a little bit clearer of what it is we're doing. Would you like for me to go into a little bit of that detail? Okay. So in the library, what um what what we're, what we're looking at is reworking the main learning commons. As you can see, we're installing some, uh, first off, when we went to um this was originally brought to us from um Maria Pickering and Walter and Nick Wool came to me and said, hey, look, P T A has some money. We'd like to look at the possibility of doing some uh renovations in our library. So that started the conversation. From there, we met with students, um, P T A high school's uh staff. Um, had a few meetings. We put some surveys out. What would you like to see in your library? What what's working, what's not working? And um we started working with uh Angelie Grant, who helped us with the drawing, literary drawings and and managed this process for us. And what we came up with is kind of dividing the library these two different sections. You'll see on the left, uh, where the tables are up. That's currently where the the carpet has got the stripes in it. We already picked it some in the back of the library, uh, becoming the library in the far far backside. Anyway, that's kind of always been the quieter area. And what we're looking at doing is putting in a glass wall that will divide that area when they would like it divided. So if we did have a class or we did have some sort of a staff meeting or something, we could close that, but not have to close the entire library like we're having to do now. So that glass wall would be very similar to what you would see when you walk into the middle school along the main office there. So there are large panels, the the panels, a couple of the panels would have doors in it. So if they were closed, you could come and go. Uh, they're very easily moved to open and close. So that'll really add a lot of flexibility. Just beyond that, on the upper side of that, Brian, you'll see that there's some offices tucked back there. Currently, there's two offices um that are used by library staff and uh what we heard is the need for some additional space. And we've created a third office space within that same same footprint. In the main learning commons area, um we have removed the large curved wall, which was uh uh, the 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 wall that went between the the library presentation, library presentation room and the library. There's kind of a curved wall out there. Um, we we've taken that curve out and we put in these um quiet booths. Uh, what we heard from the students is they wanted a place to collaborate together, not necessarily be in the quiet area. They wanted to be part of the main air, main of library. But just had a kind of have a quiet place, a little bit taller back um to kind of keep that setting. We we really work um closely with with uh Angelie on designing a space that had a lot of visibility. What we didn't want to do was create booths that you couldn't see in. We we wanted to have full visibility um and
Super vision matters.
Super vision matters even at the high school level. Yes, thank you, Bob. Um, we've also are, if you look up by the little rounded, like the horseshoe shape, that is the new circulation desk. And we we've kind of repositioned that in a way to where when someone comes into the library, they'll be able to be seen as they come in. But it'll also give them better visibility throughout the library itself. Between the library and the door where we're taking that wall out, that is the textbook storage room. We're actually removing a section of that textbook storage room and opening it up into the library, creating more of a workstation for the students to come in and have a printing station or a little bit of a workroom in there. Um, in the current workroom, um, we kind of reduced the overall square footage of it, but we've we've added a small um office space for the librarian or a quiet space for phone calls, things like that. The overall living room footage of the bookcases stays the same. We've removed some, we shifted them around. We've got really created what the style of the bookshelves were using, but overall the living room footage is staying the same throughout the the room. So collection wise, it'll it'll be have the same capacity as it does now. The next slide is the the culinary arts program. Um, again, this this program came to us early this fall. Uh, Lori and Jen and Nick came and said, hey, we've got this idea. And we started having some conversations and we'll be able, we we've um we've come this far. Um, currently, I believe we have a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy students enrolled in this, in this class for next year. So it's been Lori's been doing an amazing job on her end with the curriculum and and trying to get this going. Um.
And Tony, if I can Tony, if I can just add context to that as well. It's a, it's intended to be a semester class. Um, and so we'd be running six sections next year um right now. And then uh also thinking about our uh personal family relationships class, which uh would run two semester sections with world language and then our image classes, um, looking at some space utilizations. But those about hundred and seventy students, um, just to put it into context, that's about six sections, um, three each semester.
Thank you, Fred. And what you'll see in this drawing, th- this room is built with with a hundred percent flexibility. So it's, it's, it's where I always want to call it home, I guess that dates me, but I'm not gonna do that. It's culinary arts. So uh, we've got six different stations um with a stove and a and a sink and a and an actual um preparation island. All of those preparation islands can then be moved out into the classroom to speak and be set up for a for a janitor classroom. I know world language on on occasion likes to come into an area that they could use for cooking. Um, that's right, mentioned the 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 personal finance class or um will also be able to use that space. So the 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 classroom space will still be there um when it's not being used for the for the culinary arts program. Both of these projects are moving right along. Um, we um Angelie Grant has um has got the drawings. We're we're very close to putting him in um for permit. Um, she's also been working with uh electrical, structural, uh, and mechanical engineers, um, which that is covered under the Angelie Grant proposal. So.
Um, interjecting really quick, we do, we do want to highlight that this is a multi-funded project. So some of the money is coming from P T A for the library. Some of the money is coming from the C T E funding, the general fund to help cover the classroom construction. Probably about two thirds of the cost will be coming from capital projects. So it is, it is a multi-funded, multi-sourced project.
And and what's the two thirds cost from the capital? Like?
Uh, we're looking probably about five hundred thousand.
For both? And was that on the like the the schedule that had the boiler and like the turf field and like some of those other line items?
So. I'm I'm gonna touch on that in my side of the presentation, but I just wanted to to connect with companies.
Yeah.
This is a multi, this is a multi-funded project.
Yeah, thank you.
No business lines outside of the house. Another thing that we've been working on uh since early last fall is the Performing Arts Center. I know we've heard some about that uh in the past few weeks, uh, but it was something we had been working on uh since since last fall. Late fall, uh, Jan, late, late the year, early January, we uh reached out to P N T A, Pacific Northwest Theater Association. Um, they do a lot of uh theatrical work in around the area. We had them come in and do an audit of our of our auditorium uh space. Um, they came up with a list of some things that we needed to to take a look at and address. Um, I would I would add that in the report, I'm happy to say that um in general terms, the theater of Northwest Northwest District is in good condition. It does talk about that typically like are the the ratings and the counterweights and all of the the apparatus behind the stage usually has a thirty year lifespan. So at twenty six years, we are looking at having to do some, do some maintenance on that as well. Um, and we've been working very closely with the P N T A to come up with a plan on on uh working through these items um along with the drama department through that. So. Um, along with the drama department through that. So with that, we've, we've also, so we've got it, we're under contract now. We're spring break to come and do quite a bit of that work, um, that they found on the audit. Um, we're also, uh, have, uh, reached out to a, a who's, a who's the petition. Right, okay. To, to kind of come in and give us a, a high level overview of the, the, yes, uh, acoustics within the facility. Um, obviously we had that twenty-six years ago, things changed, technology changes, and, uh, so we'll be taking a, a closer look at that. Um, and Breeze has been working with, uh, theatrical sound vendor and a theatrical lighting, uh, vendor to be looking at some options. Obviously, we want to make sure we're doing our homework and whatever we do, we do right. Uh, we also want to make sure that whatever we do. Um, as we, as we look at in near future, to make sure that whatever we're doing, you know, if, if there's an expansion down the road, that we're not throwing good money at that. So we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. So, uh, we are doing our homework with that and, and, um. And that's kind of what you, you.
Yeah, I was just sad, you know, I know that there's been a lot of conversation about, so I mean, and, and we don't disagree with those. Um, and we want to look at those short-term plans as well as those long-term plans, um, and make sure that we make. An appropriate plan for, for how to move forward. Um, and I feel like we, we've been able to accomplish some of the things that have, that have been addressed and we're continuing to work towards. Um, coming up with that whole plan.
I've been asked a lot lately and after seeing many of you at the showcase, fine art showcase yesterday. Um, people who are very involved in committees, um, who don't seem to have a clue that this is happening. Um, and I'm wondering if it's because it's too early to involve the community with the initial research and then going out to the community, but you know, there's. Just, just wondering at what point, because I know you will, at what point and how do we let people know that this is happening?
And, and so much, remember so much of what I'm doing is we're talking general, a lot, a lot of it's general maintenance, right? I mean, we, we don't go out and, and talk to the community when we're replacing the outlets or, you know, those types of things. So, you know, I'm greasing the wheels on the, on, you know, these are the deficiencies that we're seeing. We're replacing some of the screens. So, I mean, that's obviously that, that's what you're, you're writing us to do, then we will, but there are certain things that I think we have to understand the limits of what we're. That's what we're here to do is to maintain our facilities and that's not usually something maybe.
I think it's, um, I think it's just more, uh, people, people spend a lot of energy. Um, advocating for things that are already being planned.
Sure, sure.
And so I, I don't disagree with you. Most of the time it's making sure that people are aware that this is happening.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree. As a matter of fact, can, um. Oh, we'll go on, I'm going to come back to that because I want to touch on that on my slides coming up. Uh, next slide. Um, the South Western Play Field, we're moving right along. We, uh, finished with the geotech testing, uh, soil samples last week. We had a couple of meetings with the city. The city has been very, very helpful. They have, uh, been great partners. They have, uh, agreed to fund the backstop repairs, uh, re, uh, redoing the fencing on, on the three backstops and including the other two infills. Um, we will manage that project, but they will be funding that project. So.
Is there like, um, I know like you might not know until it's built, but is there a way to sort of track like, I understand the maintenance cost is going to be less because it's artificial turf, like it's cost water, et cetera. Like, uh, if it is in fact less expensive for the city to maintain on a year-to-year basis. And if so, how much? I mean, just in terms of to sort of frame the conversation when it comes to what's an appropriate amount? For the city to be investing like from, you know, facilities perspective. Like to be said, like when it's available, uh, perhaps, you know, consider like, you know, what the savings looks like on like the maintenance side of things.
I, I, that's totally believable. I think we just need to get some timeline and, but I think that's something we can definitely have a conversation with. Um, still on track. We're, we're very hopeful. We're going to be, um, starting this project in, in, um, late June. We still have a few hurdles to clear. Um, nothing is, nothing is started until we see a backhoe on site, but we, we are, we're feeling really good about it. And, uh, design is coming along nicely. And, um, so at this point, we don't see a reason why we wouldn't be getting started.
Do we see any increase in fees so that to replace the turf and all that type of stuff, usage fees?
We have had some, started our open conversation with the city, um, with, um, creating turf fees and what that's going to look like. And as we get into this project is when we will be sitting back down and looking at that interval. Um, it was, we had talked about starting the conversation on the interval, but all of a sudden we're creating an interval on a field that was being. Or not. Um, so we, we really are trying to make sure again, we're doing this in a thoughtful way, but we have talked about that purpose and looking at making sure that we're. We're balancing that sinking fund at all turf fields on, on the island. So, uh, with the exception of our, our state.
And the expected condition time is the fall.
We are looking at, we're hoping, um. We're hoping by early October, we'll be done.
Remember, there are lots of construction delay across.
That's true.
Yeah, and I will say, all of our projects, we're so lucky. We are not looking at yards and yards of concrete because we were having a totally different conversation right now. Um, and at that level of, at that timeframe, as we get to the end of a turf installation, we're not. I mean, we're still going to be weathered up in it a little bit, but not as heavy as we were. We're not, we don't want to have to be lose soil or, you know, if we. You know, certain things out of that.
Just read an article in the Wall Street Journal this morning about how, um, the rise in oil prices is going to be affecting everything made of plastic. Like which would include turf. So it's already starting to affect the production of things like, you know, the plastic tubs you get your strawberries in.
For sure. And we're seeing the cost of all construction going right now. We borrowed up twenty percent one week. I mean, it's just, it's the price of, of everything is really going through the roof. Um, but lucky for us, we're also ahead of the game. We've locked in these prices. We've put POs for these projects. We got our guarantee pricing up. So, um, high school bleachers, uh, this has been something that's been on the, uh, the levy, not just this levy, but the levy prior, right? So this is a great example of money that wasn't spent within a levy continuing on as we move forward. And this is something that we've been working on for some time. We actually have the drawings done, uh, revised, uh, around Christmas time or around, uh, winter break. Um, and this first picture, I, I, I pulled this out because it kind of shows, this is the new design where you have little insets where you can, uh. If someone was in a wheelchair, they can pull in, uh, have a occupant or a companion seat. If it's not being used, we can pull it out and increase the seating as well. The overall capacity will move up a little bit in our gym. Um, if you look at the next slide, it shows our graphics that we're, we're. What did I do? Okay.
You love the graphics.
So these are the graphics. Um, the, the, the large, uh, logo four, five and six, that would go on either side. When you come into the door, it will be on the right and the left. And on the far, on the far west end, we are putting in a section of bleachers there. It's a little smaller bank. What's in there right now came out of the old North Western Gym. District staff moved it in there. We got it bolted in there because we needed a little capacity. These things were conkers. They, it, it's, it's been a disaster since day one, including everybody's back. We moved it in there. So our overall capacity will actually be higher than it is now, given the fact that we've got a hundred percent. Our, we have bleachers on all our walls, uh, that'll all be completely ADA accessible. We'll have handrails. We'll have designated aisleways. We've had several people over the years, actually. Luckily, we haven't had any serious injury, but we've had a lot of balls over the years, especially with some of our, our seniors. So, yeah, and those bleachers have been there forever. They've been in there since, since nineteen sixty. Um, there used to be a cut in the middle of each side as you would go to the locker rooms, but, um, we patched it up and, and just put the plastic covers on it and called and paint. Um, so, but they definitely are starting to show their age. So our hope is we'll be getting these, uh, we'll probably be doing a demo, uh, mid-July. Taking out the old bleachers and the first two weeks in August, uh, we will be putting in the, the new, the new sets of, of seating. So, you know, we're really excited to see that. High school's really excited to see that. On the next slide, um, I took this picture the night before, Tuesday night, just to kind of show, um. You know. So one thing, as we, we were just talking about, you know, people don't always understand the things that are going on behind the scenes. And here's a perfect example is, you know, capital projects, we, last year and, or it's been two years now, we bought the sound shells. And I know I brought that up in one of our beliefs where we took the packing and we built the stage for graduation. Those are the sound shells that we bought, um, along with the risers. We, we bought the carpeting on the floor. So these are things that are going on behind the scenes, just in general, uh, things that we do within our department to help with the different areas. But I would just want, want to show, if you looked at those graphics, how they pop and what they're going to look like in this gym. We've got this beautiful setup for, for showcase and these congiel bleachers. So that's why I wanted to show it. So anyway. Um, the last project we're working on.
It's really a glamorous one.
Exactly. As glamorous as the rest, but yes, we do have a sewer line issue here at the administration building. We have been fighting it for many, many years. These lovely old trees on the sides over here have played havoc with us over the years. We tried to do a pipe bursting several years ago where they pull a liner through. It helped us for a while. Um, unfortunately it did not solve our problem, so we are going to, um. Tackle that this summer and we're going to be running a new, uh, line from, uh, from the warehouse out to the main line in the middle of the road. So really exciting times, I will tell you. It's going to be interesting. That is one deep line. It is way down there. So it, it will be, it will be fun. So we're in a shovel. And, uh.
National Geographic episode. I just want to say thank you for, for the giving those bleachers ADA accessible. That makes such a huge difference to either a kid or an adult in a wheelchair. To be able to sit with everybody else and cheer with everybody else for the team, you know, and not to have to be kind of like tucked away, hidden separate from everybody at the end. Where you're in the way or tripping over you.
For sure.
Part of the community. Thank you for that.
You're very welcome. And we do get new team chairs as part of the package with the bleachers. That was negotiated, so. The team chairs, I think, we both sat in are still being used, so we do have new team chair. So anyway, that's what we got rolling for the summer.
I have just one question about the, um, the pack audit and the kind of planning around that because I know that. Like the, that kind of equipment and the, the sound design of the space and stuff is very, very specific. And so I'm just, just wondering if there's some level of, of like thinking or planning that, that can be done ahead of time. So that it's like, like, we don't really want the district to spend money on equipment that is then going to be irrelevant in X years' time. If we get the pack figure or we reorient it or we change it or we rebuild it. And so just if there can be like a, just some, some level of thinking about like. You know, maybe we buy equipment that's optimal for the future and maybe it's not optimal for the next, you know, X amount of time, right?
You're exactly right.
Shove it in and we put it in temporarily in a way where it's safe, but we can take it out.
Right, no, you're, you're right. Uh, you could have been sitting at the table with Enries, myself and the drama department because that's exactly what we were talking about. And, and that's exactly why it's, we're taking our time and we're reaching out to the right vendors. We're reaching out to the right sources, PNTA, to help guide us through this process. Because clearly we're not theatrical technicians. Um, so we are bringing those people in to work with us and to help us guide. So we are using, we're throwing good money at good.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Any questions?
So I think, I mean, I think you've sort of answered my question. So drama department is participating in this. Is that absolutely?
Yes.
So, all right, so maybe that's the miss is that, you know, drama boosters or fine arts or committee or advisory, they're not hearing about it. That maybe we need to make sure that our.
Well, I think.
Staff is communicating.
Exactly. I, I think that's not something that we tend to really reach the booster, but it's that staff members. And I know fine arts has an advisor. Um, which, you know, they can be the advocate for all of the boosters. So I, I, I would encourage that person to, to be reaching out to, to the different groups as well and, and to us with, with ideas and.
And, and I would just add in, in all fairness to the, the, the boosters and the teachers, right? This, this setting is happening very quickly. We had a, a change in a, a key position within that venue. Um, and with that change, it's, it's opened up a lot of these conversations. Um, so it's not like these conversations, I, I'll fully admit, they have been happening for years, right? These have been happening since the fall. Right? And so we've been hearing from the boosters, it's, it was shortly after that. So I think it's just the timeframe of when this all.
And, and this also, this also relates a little bit to the conversation earlier about the website and how we share with people, like the visuals of what's going on, right? Like I had never seen the, you know, the, the gym setup like that before. That was cool to see, right? Like, like sharing images like that and, and. You know, looking at the model of the, the city, the city of Versailles Island site where they have like, you know, here's something that's going on, right? Here's what we're looking at at the pack, like share your thoughts and ideas with us, whatever. And that's not for you.
It's just, it's just part of the conversation we were having earlier. It's just this, you know, the talk of the proactive community, yeah, and not being reactive. And, um, you know, it's, I, when I tell people, wait, no, it's happening. They're working on it. It's part of this capital levy and then they don't believe me. Because I don't know why they don't believe me, but they don't believe me and what the fuck can I say?
And, and please, I wasn't pushing back.
Oh, gosh, no, no, I just want to.
I'm, I'm happy to put it on.
It's, it's so much energy is used in this. I mean, I'm sure everywhere, but in this community with the unknown and the stress and the anxiety and they get riled up. And it's just not good for anybody. And these things are happening. So let's make, yeah. But I, I do, I mean, I have a orchestra drop out and a band drop out. I'm hoping for my last one to be. But, you know, so, um, I think sometimes like sports, so visual, you know, things that we do is such a big impact. And sometimes that's kind of our goal too. So I do actually very appreciate the hard folks coming to me. And because it's just not in my, you know, kind of worldview, right? And so like, uh, Debra said, it is kind of, it is good to, how do we continue to tell our story? You know, how are we intentional in, you know, instead of having people come to us, but also make sure that they know that they're part of the long-term plan? And let people know that how much we're investing in the arts, right? Versus, because you know, when we look at, you know, if a person coming in and they just look at all the project, what we do. It is a very easy visual, uh, story to say, hey, we're investing a lot in the sports, right? And so it's those kind of like, you know, how do we better tell our stories and making sure that we do, uh, have equitable investment in all of our kids. We do all the different types of activities. So I do appreciate that we are having this in the plan. And then, um, making sure that, that the community continue to know what we're doing. Um, but yeah, so I feel good about that, that this is getting rolled in because I, I would never have thought about it.
Sure.
Yeah.
I, I like the, I'm sorry.
Just, just a reminder that, that this is for information.
And we do have a, 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 a funding update.
Yeah, but really important, I just want to add, as you bring up athletics, so much of the money we spend on athletics is our annual maintenance on athletics. And that's why we have to go out in the levy. We're not creating new, a, a, a new stadium every eight to ten years, right? We're not creating a tennis course. We're not, tho- those are mon, those are funds that we have to do to maintain our facilities and our, even our grass fields and things like that. So it's, it's, it's more of a maintenance piece, not a, a new structure piece, which then kind of makes that lopsided. When, as what you just said, because it's not something that's, so.
And it's also important to remember that a lot of these bigger ticket items like the bleachers. Are general purpose items that serve more than just athletics.
Correct.
Setting, being able to host fine arts in the gymnasium where we have those bleachers and are able to fit a significant amount of appearance. The community in the gymnasium is a performing center in itself. Uh, being able to host the student body in the gymnasium for assemblies is part of the basic ed. So it's important to remember that a lot of our facilities, the biggest user of the field in the fall is marching band. We had to rewrite the warranty on the turf in the stadium for our marching band. Um, because we have so many. So I think it's also important to remember to tell the story that, yeah, we spend a lot of money on some of these facilities that are. Primarily athletic in nature, but they do serve multiple purposes. So I think that's important to, to mention for, um, and so jumping right into money.
Yes.
That's what we do. Uh, I'm going to skim over some of these slides in the interest of time. But it's important to remember that we are in the last year of this capital levy. Um, we voted in a new levy, new projects, new things, but that doesn't start until twenty-three. Um, calendar year twenty-three. So we're still in this last levy. And as, uh, Director Kuv mentioned, Tony mentioned, we do, we pulled. The gym out of the last six-year levy into the current six-year levy. So it's been on there for twelve years almost. Um, and it's one of those things where there's always going to be some projects that don't make it, do make it, get added to it. And so some of the things that were added to the list and we produced, I've attached one of the lists that we maintain about the levy onto the gym item. And talking about how much we spent on those items. But some of the things that we did add, um, was all of those entrances to all the buildings. Um, the roofing of selected buildings, we didn't have in the levy, the IMS roof on the one hundred, two hundred building that had to happen, right? We also didn't have the. We also didn't have the forty second street crosswalk um that happened about, what, five, six years ago? Um but the long-range facility master plan process was not attached into the levy, uh nor was the pathways program building. Um and so there's, we need to be cognizant of the flexibility of of the levies that we're going into. Um a question was raised about what are the bonds, it was a hundred million dollar bond that was passed in twenty fourteen. Um provided that when we're looking at the the additions that were added, the upgrades, we did significantly upgrade performance in music spaces and music education spaces in the middle school. We replaced a lot of light for light, but that was expanded. Um the four science rooms, the five gen ed classrooms, restrooms and spent classroom in the high school. So we did add those, we added Northwood itself with its separate art room and its separate music room. Um so there were significant investments within the last eight years in terms of of gen ed space and specifically targeted spaces as well. And we will be repaying the bonds in twenty twenty nine. So if we're starting to think about things, it's important to have that in our back of our head is that we've got about seven years to repay the bond, the payments are gonna take up a little bit every year until we repay it, but we're getting a lot closer. Um the distribution of funding, um. Yes, the capital projects fund itself, the fund balance increased significantly during the bond construction period.
Sure.
Um partially because so much of the staff attention was focused on getting buildings put together that we weren't able to fully perform some of these lower level or mid-level programs. Um and so there are still program projects that are on the list that haven't been touched. Um but there are things within the fund balance and within the budget um that we have here month twenty four. So we have a million dollar for technology upgrades, so remember capital projects also is the home of technology. So I've given Enries a million dollars this year to to upgrade the phone systems, what's the other?
Uh so the advice that we're doing is we have started our network structural upgrades and we've already replaced forty five of our network switches, um which is in that six-year technology plan uh further down the road, so we have some funds for additional projects. Um we're also looking at, um we've done phone upgrades, we've done uh that, we're adding additional for leaking screens to our buildings. We continue our for leaking screen rollout, um and then we're also looking at, um. Um we're uh in our advisory, we're working at earmarkings to bring vendors to help us improve our windows energy practices so that we can, we can look at how to manage uh potential corporate laptops versus iPads and and things like that without adding additional technology staff to support that. So trying to make the practices more efficient.
Uh we do have money for the boilers set aside within the fund balance itself, within the budget. Um because we know that, and air handling, because that we know over the last two years we've been pushing them to their limits, trying to get air through those very thick filters um to cycle through as fast as possible, so we can keep getting buildings. Um we did earmark a significant chunk of money within the fund balance and within the budget for field upgrades. We know it's an expensive project, we've been planning on it for several years, uh and we had opportunity now, so we earmarked it. Um we also, within the fund balance itself, not necessarily within the budget, but within the fund balance, we maintain a two and a half million dollar essentially self-insurance pool. So if we spend vast majority of money internally, within the Tony and I are thinking, we maintain two and a half million dollars as kind of like our floor for capital projects, so that we will always have something in case our roof blows out or the sewer lines crumble and it's phenomenal, thirty feet down when we're down. Um so it, there are things that we do earmark within the budget. Within the big budget itself, that massive at one ninety-five a night that we present to you every August, um that's a couple hundred pages long, within the capital project section, there is a breakout of all the projects that we budgeted for that year. Um so it is specifically available what's within the the budget. As I was researching this, uh I wanted, I went back to the authorizing resolution for the levies. I wanted to see what was exactly in the levies because a lot of questions have come up about, well, you put a project in, why aren't you in the project? What do you do with the money? I mean, you told the community you're gonna do this. But within the authorizing resolution that we then take the community to go on, um says any or all of the improvements have been completed or their completion due to provided for or their completion found to be impractical, the district may apply to letting proceeds or any portion thereof to other portions of the improvements or to other capital purposes of the district. Um as the district in its discretion shall determine. So we do have within the levy itself the recognition that, yeah, stuff's gonna happen. There needs to, stuff's gonna either be impractical to do or stuff's gonna come up that you don't know about and you have to be flexible and adjust to it. So I think it's important to remember that as we have some of these discussions about, you know, what are we earmarking in the budget for? Things that have come up specifically or as we change um and move through it. Uh additionally, attached to this agenda item and for time sake, I'm not gonna go through it, but we have completed the vast majority of the projects for the sixteen to twenty-two capital projects. Um there are some smaller things that, you know, we push off, we didn't even reseal the parking lots in this levy cycle, we'll do it next time. We didn't repaint the stripes, but there's some things that just impractical. Um some projects are deferred at our discretion. Um sometimes we defer it because it's practical, sometimes we defer it because we wanna do it right. And we wanna be thoughtful on our approach to it. Um our previous funding through bonds uh provided with significant updates and our repayments are coming up soon. Uh and we do maintain certain earmarks attached to some of the priorities that we have. Um but there's still a significant flexibility within the fund balance that gives us the opportunity to shift mid-year in the fall and dots new upgrades for things like the PAC or um phone systems, because heaven knows we need a better phone system. Um so there's a lot of, there's a lot of funding mechanisms in place um and in play and it does get very complicated and it is really hard to tease out some of the binary details within capital projects. But we do try to be very transparent about how we run capital projects, making sure, making sure that board is aware and the community is aware um what some of these larger items are and what we're doing. And if we do need to increase the frequency of some of our communications, we can definitely look at how we do some updates. And maybe the website is a great opportunity to to post some information so that we can focus on other topics.
Do you have a fund balance for the capital projects um as well? What what's the ending fund balance for the twenty twenty-two, the previous?
It's twenty sixteen to twenty twenty.
Yeah, levy, is there a remnant?
Yes, there there is a remnant, um. I would say we're probably looking at about probably about four and a half million dollars.
Is that including the two point five self-insurance?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, so I mean, we have, we have, we have, within the capital project, within the capital projects fund itself, we have about seventeen million dollars. That's the entirety of the fund balance, but if we're looking at what the remnant of the levy is, like the, what hasn't been spent out of the levy?
Yeah.
It's about four and a half million dollars and some of that is gonna, a large chunk of that will be spent this year because we're gonna be taking care of things like phone upgrades and network switches and implementing the fields and things like that.
That's true. There's there's, I mean, I don't wanna make a point of rushing to spend money, you're saying it's there, I that would be senseless. But I think the other thing would be it's useful to have, uh, you know, you you give us the monthly, um, uh, the other one, the.
The quarter.
Well, the quarter, the quarterly.
Fund balance.
Fund balance on the the general fund, you know, it'd be nice to have a quarterly on this as well as.
I can, I can start putting in.
Yeah.
A a similar slide. The tool that I use to provide that, the the jagged chart with the the month end balances doesn't do the capital projects fund and it's a request that we've been making to the software provider for years, saying, hey, please add this. Um but the, to them, it's it's too complex, uh which, uh but we can start making our own charts uh for that purpose.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think the other other one we'd use to is clearly with people we're connected with, whether it's the the sports fields and things like that, there's low friction for that communication. There's low friction for sewer pipes, there's low friction with technology, um it's high friction for sewer pipes, but. Um but I I I think, you know, when we were doing the preview, doing this recent bond, we had a discussion what's the community input around projects around it? And then we kind of decided, well, it looked something like all the money was earmarked for something, so maybe there's no opportunity for community input. Uh but clearly there is a little bit of opportunity, how do we do that? I think with like, for example, like in the PAC, if I'm changing the electric outlets, I, there might be other things I could change at the same time too. And that might be a broader set of users know what those other things are. If I revolve in my kitchen, I might put in a new kind of trash cactus that's old too.
So great example of PAC, because Tony and I were having this conversation this afternoon. Um Tony is signing the PO and the contract for some of the repairs and maintenance on the catalog and the with the anti-all prevention system. Um but as we're looking at that and then need to replace some of the ropes and the boozing curtains, we're like, what else can we be doing to make this more functional? Uh so we are gonna be installing uh a set of curtain, we're gonna replace the curtains themselves, right?
We're replacing the the black scrim.
Yes.
And it's also putting in a a full-size projection screen, so one of the, one of the curtains that comes out will actually be a projection screen. And then we will be doing a full upgrade on our uh follower strength in the catalogs as well with the guardrails and just bringing them up. They meet the code the day they were built, but not necessarily the code today, so that's what we're, we're addressing.
And I know that Ian's been doing, you know, around the district stuff, I mean, this kind of thing, like, hey, these are capital, like, I mean, I he did one with the one on different publishing, but.
We don't wanna know.
But, you know, that's great, I mean, it's not, people wanna know that it's happening, it's great PR. What I get so frustrated about is you guys do such amazing work and that so many in the community don't even know it and um and and it should be recognized. And yet people get really frustrated because they don't think it's happening. So we have to do a better job of making sure that people know what's happening because they care, because they want it to happen, but it, for the most part, it's happening. So that's, I mean, we're missing so much goodwill and and I don't mean that that we need, but.
Yeah, no, you're right, I think Ian's idea with the videos, they really are great. Yeah, I think they published one, I think I'm coming out for transportation in the next week or so, and he's doing a great job, and I think that's a great idea.
You have go for the front passes today.
Yeah.
On the front of the bus, yeah.
And on the outside. So uh.
Yeah.
We will, we'll be following the buses that go along the route and seeing kids come off and on, and so uh.
Right, so don't watch your distance.
I have no way, I was actually just kidding, just kidding, just all tell me about it. Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Two, one, yeah, okay, thank you. Um next up, we have the, we have board policy eighteen hundred O E seven, financial administration draft, those which seven and nine be interfunds, well.
So this is an action item, and we are asking the board for action tonight, and I will go through the description. And Tony, they go home.
Thank you.
Um so as, as we had notified the board earlier in the year, uh and uh as recently as the last board game, we did have concerns over cash flow for the month of March. Um when we were looking at the cash flow, we we noticed that it would likely be getting kind of thin until we got our levy collection in the month of April. Um and because of the enrollment-related loss in the critical model. OSBI took more out of January than we anticipated. They took a full million dollars off our enforcement within January instead of spreading it out across the year like we had thought they would. Um which meant that January was lower, February is lower, and it means that we will be in need of some additional assistance within March till we get to the levy collections in April. We have money coming, it's a timing issue, it's just when does the money hit? Um we also, and it's a, we all, as we mentioned before, we have money within the district. We have lots of money in capital projects. And the interfund loan process is an intended process that's put it out there by the state legislature to make these funds available for the specific type of situation where as we get a little thin uh until levy collections, we are able to move funds over temporarily and then send them back once we get the levy collections. Superintendent Glossy mentions California had to do this significantly as we were talking with the E S D. Um it doesn't happen very often in Key County because we have some of the biggest districts in the state in Key County. Um and they, we have been growing over the last decade and a half. Um the pandemic has really shifted how funding happens for a lot of the districts. Um and so outside of Key County, this process is very common, it's much more common than I thought. Um uh because it's, you know, I'm receivers. Um so as we are looking towards March and preparing to move into April, um we are asking for authorization to borrow up to two million. I believe we only need to borrow one million um to to ensure that we have a pretty cash flow for March. Um which we can then pay back. The other, just one second, the other thing that we are working on and communicating with the E S D is working with OSBI to see if we can get our enrollment stabilization funded earlier than June or July. So that would also significantly help the cash flow pictures move through us.
One fact you we we did mention is, uh yes, our remedy was, unfortunately, was less in January. February saw um more expenditures than anticipated. February is every year our um special education safety net calculation month and our staff always, our special service staff does an amazing job of making sure that's a very compliance-oriented process. And every year they've done a fabulous job of getting every dollar out there that we're able to get reimbursed for. Um but one of the pieces that has to be in alignment is that all of your contracts are fulfilled completely. And so that was a process that um made the expenditures higher than anticipated in February. Great news in that our special service staff um was able to garner one point two million in safety net. And again, we reached out to them and say, that's this year's money, can we get it now? And they said, no, it was ended in August. So yes, the money is, uh we got, even E S D said to us, I mean, you know, I'm conversed with them on Monday. You have the money, this is a timing issue.
It's an accounting, it's accounting rules and a time issue.
Uh so so I guess, yeah, going for timing issue. Um so I get that levy collections are next month, which I guess wide iteration, three hundred and sixty-five days. It was just a bridge us for a longer two.
Because the law says that you have three hundred and sixty-five days to repay it. So we're not necessarily holding on to that money for three hundred and sixty-five days.
I I I get that, like, we don't, like, we didn't pay it sooner, but I guess my question is like, why can't this be repaid in ninety days?
Uh it's entirely can be repaid in ninety days. Uh I, we got this resolution directly from our external counsel that writes these resolutions on a regular basis. Um and so we left it there because that was their recommendation.
It's what the law allows.
Yeah, it's what the law allows.
I I know that allows, I mean, I just, I guess, beginning of this discussion, it just seems like in the short term, I get that in short term. So like, and I, that would take ninety days and if we need to extend it, then come back in ninety days and the board can vote to extend, but.
I don't know about you, but whenever I have a zero percent interest, I take the full time and if I want to pay it sooner, I can, so. Unless someone.
unless someone else thinks that's a good idea, I would love to.
So the interest percent that we do have to charge, uh, I spent a lot of time talking to Key County to figure this out, um, it's a half percent.
We have to pay ourselves in this.
We have to pay ourselves interest. Uh, it's frustrating, but it's a half a percent. So, uh, and that's for the entire three hundred and sixty-five days. So if we do transfer it over in ninety days, um, it does give us um, the three hundred and sixty-five, I remember the half percent of interest. So we do have incentives to move it back sooner.
But wait, sorry, we're paying it to ourselves, so does it matter? Does the interest?
Well, it goes to what it does.
It goes back to the other time, no.
And this is, and this is, and this is where it is. This is where the accounting rule comes in, we have money, the district has money. It's just how do we move things correctly.
And when OSBI typically takes money back for, which we've never had because we've never been lower than projected, or at least significantly.
Yeah.
Have they always taken a lump sum at the beginning? No.
So, yeah, it, and it, it's a frustrating situation. It's happened, this is our opportunity to adjust to it and move forward. We don't intend to keep it for three hundred and sixty-five days. Most likely, we will be putting it back in ninety days. But, uh, in terms of the resolution, we went with what was recommended to us by outside counsel.
So right now, our fund balance is going to two hundred and ninety-one K, something like that, I saw the, the consent.
So that's, that's the, that's the money that we came into the month of March with. Do we make a fund loan now and give us that additional money?
Two hundred and eighty million, two, two million, yeah, two hundred million, no, two million, three hundred ninety.
Uh, yeah, so, I mean, looking at the projected funding from the state for March, we did the calculations. We should be getting similar to February, which is about, a little about three and a half million.
I see.
For general add, four and a half million total, when you, once you account for special education payments, transportation, all the other little bits. Our usual difference between the state funding and what we paid out is about a million dollars. So if we float ourselves a million, million point two, that gives us enough money to carry over into April. And at which point, we'll receive our levy collections and we'll continue pushing on OSPI to quickly speed up our.
So we receive fifty percent of the levy collections in April.
Yeah, we receive fifty percent of levy collections in April.
And then June and July, you were concerned about more funding needed, you were trying.
Usually in July, July is when it starts to take down a little bit more because that's when we're buying, people are cashing out dedication days, staff members or any other contracts.
So yeah, actually, I'll use, this loan might be useful to have through July.
Yeah.
If, if the pull forward doesn't happen.
Yeah. Can I say that, I mean, like, it seems to me like we'd be just cleanest, like, we, in the, the finance, like, financially, right, on August thirty-first. Right, so couldn't we just have it be repaid by August thirty-first, so we like, sort of, we don't have like this interfund, like payable and receivable. Like, it sounds like it gets us through all the liquidity crunches, but then we're looking for twenty-two, twenty-three, like, we've already, and we can revisit it for, for whatever reason, like, not able to pay back by the end of, like, financial close. But it seems to me like you want to pay it back, just so it's like very clear, like, what our finances look like going into the next, like, annual year. Like, that's my rationale for not having up to three hundred and sixty-five days.
I mean, it, it could go either way, uh, for me. I, I mean, if we want to do less than three hundred and sixty-five days, this is really the same knowledge that when we calculate the interest on the loan, it is the number of days that is loaned divided by three sixty-five. So it doesn't matter really if it's, you know, we keep it for three hundred and sixty-five days. The law says we have to pay it back in three hundred and sixty-five days, and then the interest is calculated by three hundred and sixty-five days. So if you want to give me direction as you're voting for it to pay it back in ninety days, that's what I will do. But.
I think if, personally, I'd like to borrow with three hundred and sixty-five days to have that flexibility. But if we're talking about being display responsible and just keeping accountability and keeping an eye on things, then it makes sense to go to that end of the budget, you know, for this need, we should just have an open kind of an open line of equity kind of thing. But just so, how do we close it? And then if you need more, then we can put it in this passage to get, so that makes sense to me. I think we really approved resolution number seven oh nine as our.
So do we need, we, in discussion, uh, do we need to pause this, huh?
Yes, we do.
So that makes the change difficult, is what I'm gathering.
Uh, it would make it difficult because we'd have to rewrite a significant portion of it and turn it up to the council again.
And need support to prove it.
It was being discussed, I'm not sure we need to, we have up to three hundred and sixty-five days, I'm not sure what the legal question is to move it back shorter, like, I mean, I think, I mean, it doesn't sound like there's any law that's going to prevent us from making it shorter, for sure, like duration.
But the, but he went to the people who have that legal expertise, and this is what they recommended. And he's telling us his intention is to pay it back as quickly as possible. At some point, you just have to trust people to do their jobs.
The motion's on the table, like, you want to vote, we can vote, I will vote for ninety days.
Well, that's not on the table.
Okay, then fine, then we can vote on this if you want to vote.
To, uh, so, for ninety days?
Yes.
As in?
See him say it.
I move that we shorten the duration from three hundred and sixty-five days. We pass it as written with the change from three sixty-five to nine. Is there a second?
Do, do you know for certain that council has approved that?
I do not, but I'm sure that they would be fine with it.
But I mean.
It does say no later than.
It is, the, the resolution is written, so that says no later.
No, 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 I know, but I'm asking, did you, I understand that no later than, I think that's appropriate language. So my question is, do you know that council, I mean, you went to an expert for a reason, whose job it is to do these and assess them, and they made this recommendation for this language? You're, I, I, I mean, are you confident that that's appropriately the language? I didn't ask you.
Okay, the, the three hundred and sixty-five days?
No, what they want to change it to.
Ninety days.
I would run, that's a major change in a contract.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's not, I'm not the expert. We don't have that expert here because they wrote this and recommended that we do it. I tend to
Yeah.
do what experts in their fields are recommending. That just is kind of the way that I work. But I, I don't know why everything has to be second-guessed when we have heard about the due diligence. If you don't trust the people that are making these recommendations to you, that's a whole bigger issue.
So would there be, so ninety days, I think, gets us to, sorry, I'm, I think ninety days gets us to June. And I've heard a suggestion that July was of interest. So, uh, but you could say, uh, three sixty-five, which is a legal outside of what you can do, as I understand it, with a board expectation that it pays as early as possible with a target of nine days. And if you wanted to do that, I'm just trying to.
If you want twenty, I can do one fifty, I'll do anything that gets us, how many days, like, in two minutes until now, to the end of August thirty-first, like, how many days that is, like, I'm fine, otherwise, I.
Are you amending, do you want to amend your amendment?
I mean, if you, if you want twenty.
I mean, I will be telling you when I move the money, and I will tell you when we pay the money back.
But it just sounds like Ty said he specifically needed it for a certain thing. And so council gave us a template, but Ty said he needed to July, August. And so it makes sense that we tied the amount of money to what he said he needed. He didn't say he needed.
I'm saying, what Erin proposes is like a reasonable compromise, but, but we have the, the amendment is like with motion to move to second it, and so we have to, and we, can we withdraw motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to withdraw?
We withdraw, who's the women?
Yeah, I withdraw in, uh, a hundred and sixty days, I made a hundred and sixty days.
No, it's like, it's a language to be, shall we repay by the capital projects fund? I'm sorry, to the capital project fund, no later than.
No, what, what Erin was saying, the expectation, the expectation that it will be repaid by.
It'd be cleanest if we just moved up to three sixty-five days to once.
One twenty.
One sixty.
That'll be borrowed tonight. Like, I don't know, like, when we're going to borrow.
Yeah. Probably the cleanest.
Like, for one fifty, you can borrow the next ten days, right?
Yeah.
The alternative is if you could do three sixty-five and, you know, make board expectation of you pay back as soon as possible and that regular.
So can we do a side contract for a loan expectation?
I mean, but it's so easy, just change to one sixty and then do a new one, that's a new budget cycle too. I just want to show my work keeping.
Oh.
Because then we're paying the lawyer again to write up the same contract.
Well, we wanted, wanted to change the contract tonight. Can we, can we edit this resolution tonight and pause it tonight? Or is that a tough question? I don't know what that's like.
I, I don't, this is beyond, without me knowing research on it, I'm a little bit uncomfortable, I mean, no advice, but I believe that.
I would think something like this is supposed to be noted, would be my, my take.
Noted?
Put, put a, put a board op.
It's just changing the.
There'll be other things.
But there's a need to.
My, my only concern due to that here is I, in a, like, I, I get the desire for financial accountability, but I don't want to, in the process of trying to bring about more financial accountability, accidentally change the contract in a way that exposes the district in some way to like financial risk, like, that would be.
I don't, I don't miss, I don't foresee any specific compliance risks with changing the language in terms of the duration of when we borrow and when we have to pay it back. We're not going to get penalized for that. It's more, do we, are we?
Lose flexibility.
Yeah, and we lose, we do lose flexibility. And when we do close the books in August thirty-first, if we haven't paid it back by August, if we pay it back on August thirty-first, we still have to notice a due, we still have to report a interest due to, right? So there will be some components of a to from in the books anyways. So we can the board can tell me when to put it back, whenever you want me to put it back. I will do it, and I will tell you when I put it back, and I'll tell you when I borrow it. But we do need to make some type of decision tonight so that I can, I can move on.
Can I just get a little bit sensitive, whether people are more interested in changing the overall length of it or leaving the length but changing the language to say pay to be paid back as soon as possible with the board's expectation that it will be paid back by start of September.
It just makes sense, that's the way Ty taking it for this duration, that we give for that duration. And if he needs it, if something happens and then he needs another, then he does another one, it's just, I don't want it to be complicated, right?
I think their complication is doing reposting and coming back, yeah, that's one complication. I think the other complication is, we talked earlier about having the fund balance be locked. So you have to come to a whole resolution to have that taken out. I can see lots of other reasons to do that, and there's a huge amount of value to do that. But if that becomes as complex a process as this, I can see not wanting to do that. And it, 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 it has another problem too.
It should be complex, like, that thing, like.
I agree. Well, okay, let's, I, I hear, let's, let's, do we have a vote on the amendment?
We were through the amendment, so we'll.
Okay, I, I will move for a hundred and fifty days that we adopt as drafted with the provision that three hundred and sixty-five days revise to a hundred and fifty. That's my, my move to pass.
I second. So putting on that amendment, all in favor of, of, uh, just first amendment, Brett, um, please say aye.
Aye.
All those?
Aye.
So that amendment has not passed.
I move we are for resolution number seven oh nine, that's great.
Second.
All in favor of passing resolution seven oh nine as written, please say aye.
Aye.
All those?
Name.
So that has to be a three or two.
So, uh, I, I'm, I'm happy with this, I do, here you would, I think it'll be paid by August thirty-first, I, I appreciate that. And I do appreciate the much higher accountability around the fund balance lock and the value for that for a lot more reasons than talked about for this one. So please don't let this situation upset that, because I think that has more long-term value to the stability of our budget and stability of the district than this does. So I get it, thank you.
And honestly, I, this is totally, personally, I support and understand the need for it. I think you're fully doing, this is a matter of, you know, in the end, it's the same thing, you're going to do it, but it's just a matter of being more intentional about being accountable to say what things to cover for a period. But it's not about, it's not trusting you or not saying that we're going to do it.
We got to keep hoping, you guys, we have so much left to do. Next up, we have, uh, yeah, partial governance process monitoring, my approach on superintendent succession. So as probably everybody watching this knows, um, we, we have concluded our superintendent search and selection process almost, so I hope this is the second to last update of this type that I will be giving. And, uh, we, the board voted, uh, to select Deputy Superintendent Rundle as the, um, as our next superintendent to begin July first, um, with a transition period of a month between him coming on board and the retiring. Um, sorry, Superintendent Klossy retiring. I won't put a cheat at this point in anything. And, um, I just wanted to, um, to thank Dr. Rundle and our other two finalists who came into part in the, um, community meetings and school tours and so forth on Monday and on, and everyone in the community that contributed and, you know, answered our questions and showed up for, for, um, group, I don't know if they're both focus groups, um, and just has continued, gives a lot of great feedback and input throughout the process. And, um, we, I, I think we'll be able to kind of like celebrate officially when we, we have Dr. Rundle sign, sealed and delivered, which should be at our next regular board meeting on April twenty-first. So we're just heading to, we're getting details of his contract now. And, um, I'm very grateful to everyone's support on the board for, for this process, which has been a lot of work and a lot of time, but hopefully with a good outcome, that will be great for the district, so, thank you. But that vote, still me. Okay, board policy, uh, full governance process monitoring, this is board policy eighteen hundred O E six, budgeting slash financial planning.
This is your compliance, the compliance at four for O E six, and Ty will walk you through this.
Okay, uh, O E six is all about the planning, uh, criteria that would be used to present and prepare the budgets. So number one, making staff, parent communities support by focusing resources and classroom instruction, we will leave your plans with that. It's cost-effective, non-sustainable, needs bargaining to staff, and all the requirements we are making significant efforts to make it sustainable, to really require. That, the one area where we do have potential conflict because, uh, O E seven was voted as partially compliance, uh, is point three, making adequate budget reserving financial requirements of borrowing agencies consistent with board policy eighteen hundred O E seven. The section of O E seven that was not under compliance was fund balance. So, um, we are, um, recommending that we are not compliant with section three. Number four is, uh, lengthy, meaning, uh, meaning the borrowing priorities order, safe learning environment, retains essential level of support services. Um, it's requiring instructional hours, uh, for education and building operations, preserves basic education programs, staff enrolls and class size at present levels, reflects anticipated changes in employee compensation with inflationary adjustments, step increases, time responsibility, incentive increases and benefits. Reflect anticipated changes in employee compensation with inflationary adjustments that increases time responsibility, incentive increases and benefits. Add the scope secondary programs, name students to graduate apartments and these, the high rate of student acceptance and the student preferred choices of post-secondary institutions. Prioritize additional resources towards building an organization capabilities insufficient to achieve. Uh work policy is number oh 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 one and eighteen hundred OE one for about additional adequate and reasonable budget support. For board development, board operations and other governance priorities, we believe we're in compliance with number four. Uh five is presented in a format which just discloses the planning assumptions, including anticipated changes to state funding, adjustments to student enrollment. Democratic changes allows the board to understand the relationship between the budget and the priorities for the year. We believe we're in plans with that. It is presented to the board with adequate time for review and approval before September one, we believe that we're also in plans with. At that, so we recommend uh the board find this portion of the compliance with eighteen hundred. I move that the board sort of uh finds.
Second.
I would just notice that the deter- I would just note that the determination, I I don't call them first of compliance, but. Our choices are in compliance or in compliance with noted exceptions. So just want to make sure that we're.
So we're in compliance with noted exceptions as we now.
Unless we change the form.
As we now pass the recommendation, that's correct, right?
Yeah.
So it's the form right now is checked for non.
No, no, no.
It's check for compliance.
In compliance with one exception.
Uh oh, okay.
They're.
Oh, that's superintendent's termination, I see, I see.
So the second box.
Yeah, yeah, okay, fine.
I'm just kind of correcting your request.
Oh, I.
And I just want to make, I mean, we can change it to first compliance.
No, no, I again, it's it's, yeah, okay.
Uh noted decision, okay. Um all in favor of finding the district in, I'm sorry, can you say it again? In compliance with noted exceptions, um please say aye.
Aye.
All those, me? Thank you. The next one is um.
Certain compliance report for OE eleven, um monitoring report for facilities and capital assets. This is also a level one. And Ty will. Talk to you this time.
All right, establish, all right, uh OE eleven, facilities, capital assets, number one, established, schedule, set priorities for capital construction, placement. Renovation and maintenance projects, instead of these priorities, it's presentable, as to the highest priority, correction of unsafe conditions, maintenance is necessary. Uh disclose assumptions amongst the plans to develop, including growth patterns, financial and human capital impact individual projects, allow other parts of the condition. Uh present for annual review by the board of the district's long-range facility master plan. We are, we are compliant with one, not recommend land acquisition about first determining growth patterns and credit costs. Construction transportation factors, we do not plan on requesting any purchases of land within the district boundaries because there is none. We're compliant with three, uh two, uh number three, not operating just to construction schedules that significantly increase cost or reduce quality, we believe we're compliant with that. Um the superintendents should advise the board of all changes orders on a timely basis, we believe we're compliant with that. Not allow facilities to be unclean, unsanitary or unsafe, we believe we are compliant with that as well. Uh number six, not unreasonably deny the public's use of facility as long as student functions of the academic program are not compromised. We believe we are uh in compliance with number six. Uh number seven, develop consistently administered detailed facility use guidelines, limiting permitted use application, the applicable fee structure, clear user expectations. Uh and consequences and unfortunate procedures uh for failure to follow rules, believe we're compliant with seven. Eight, provide and maintain comprehensive functional technology and infrastructure, we believe we're compliant with. Uh we request the board uh find some compliance with eighteen hundred.
So.
Second.
Okay, um all in favor of finding the board in compliance or with uh OE eleven.
Aye.
Uh please say aye.
Aye.
All those, me? That passes by eight, but five to zero. Uh next up, we have the consent agenda.
I move your consent agenda is published.
Same. Uh all of your written consent agenda is published, please say aye.
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 All those, me? Also passes by five to zero. Next, we have. Uh superintendent announcements, I think.
Um you have nothing. Nothing major, just a very successful um finance showcase over the last two nights that was um really good to to get to be part of.
Uh board announcements, increase in the first, you have a legislative report, yeah?
I agree.
Um other board reports?
Pass, I'm gonna get them turned up for a while.
I've got the high school pack, I want to like uh like to comment on it, it was a, it was a great meeting, but the high school pack. They went over the self-renewal cuts and talked a little bit about that, as I mentioned earlier. Target was about thirty-one cost size, which gives a little bit of wiggle room. Uh the max cap was thirty-two to one in the classroom. Uh any electric courses below eighteen to twenty could be cut, as mentioned earlier, but stacking brings them back. Didn't want to kill programs that had low enrollment, but they wanted to maintain. It was a very important thing that they did too, that one example was choir clubs, that's what we called out. Uh also moving to CTE, CTE has higher funding, so when they can get CTE style funding, it actually works out. So a lot of work is done in that. Uh on a COVID and a stand frame standpoint, uh they've had great COVID uh results, zero to three cases every week. Despite uh no masking and high school.
No requirements.
No required masking and uh, yeah, high school close proximity. Uh another interesting one is tomorrow, they are having the Association of Educational Services Districts meeting on Friday. Which is an audit done of the academics of the high school. It's a, it's a very significant audit that looks uh across the programs, the high cap, the honors programs. Uh looks at the SAT scores, the ACT scores over time, uh really high-quality data report uh that's focused on academics. Uh everybody uh in the room was very appreciative of the data. I think there was some talk about putting that on the website so it's more readily shared, so I thought that was great. Uh would worth looking, I think, having that outside audit, look at our program, I saw the meetings tomorrow. There are meetings with parents and uh I will be attending as a pack member for some of that. Uh but speaks very highly of uh of our high school programs. Finally, uh there was a really great discussion by Kate Yoder uh on the math department. And a talk about all the math pro- programs and issues. Uh again, I high commendation to Walter for a lot of candor in these meetings. So uh self-criticism, criticism, super welcome, lots of discussion about where we are failing and where we are succeeding. Uh very strong math program, one example that was looked at, we've got about fifteen hundred kids that run through math. At the high school, about a hundred go to outside um schools, perimeter, that type of thing. And there was a, a desire to understand what drives that, why does that happen? Uh and how can we make our math program better so that you you don't have economic uh privilege to be able to go out to those type of things? Uh so o- o- other other issues around around there as to. Why do, you know, people take a lot of high-profile math courses, honors and AP courses? And what causes, you know, problems for kids, why, uh how do you have stress and anxiety? How, why are they doing this? Even questions were asked, can teachers be causing stress and anxiety? And people were looking at that level of detail as well. This is not really the students, not really the parents, but perhaps teachers. So I I thought it was a very good meeting to really understand what's happening, very, very academic-focused, as you can imagine. During this and uh self-critical, so I will, I will say it was a a a lot of. Interest in this and a lot of people being self-critical and a desire to to be better. Uh so that that's all I have for this, um yeah, I think that's good. Oh, one one other thing was, uh sorry, uh we talked about uh middle school grading changes pretty quickly. Uh and not having subjective assessments necessarily and doing standings based grading. They are looking at how do those middle schoolers perform in high school when they change in high school, certainly is grading hardcore, everything like that. The other kids affected, that's all I've got, it's, it was a great meeting.
Um thanks, Ava. I have a question to ask, okay. Um I had the, well, I missed the PTA council meeting because it was last. Whatever day we had interviews and then um also had Wes Mercer pack and um that was actually a really great pack. Um we we started off with principal Isaacson telling us about the basketball tournament that. That they are involved in every day and um has, or at least every day that they do it, I think it's every day. And they have uh the fourth graders refing and we're we're talking about how, anyways, it was, it was very funny and 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 they were talking about the development of from, you know, the quality of play from kindergarten. And uh so it's have, and the kids are pretty excited about it, their, I know, parents were all talking about it, the kid are talking about. Um second thing that happened was uh we got an update on the ma- on elementary math curriculum from Julie Newcomer, who is leading the charge on the new curriculum. So gave an update on that, they're they're exploring um different curriculums and um. Working on that, uh they will be looking for community members to be participating in that at some point. I think it's a little bit, they're they're doing the initial stages right now. Um and then finally, they had um three fifth grades. Students, I think they were all fifth graders, come in and talked to us about they're doing a class meeting um type uh thing this year. Where they all all have different roles and they um. What's it called, meeting? Uh anyways, it's like a class that they all weekly meeting, they do a weekly meeting where they prepare the agenda, they get. Um and they assign different roles and the fifth graders were telling us what they were doing and about it. And they were really excited about it and taking ownership over their class and really listening, you know, they have some people, they prepare. Some some kids do pros and some kids do cons and what they want to develop a new rule or something like that. So they were, they came and presented to us about what they were doing there, so that was pretty, um that was pretty fun to watch and they were great presenters too. And I just really hope that sooner rather than later, we have a discussion about um. The structure of our meetings.
Anybody else have a board report?
I missed some of the liquid ones because of our interview.
Okay, um. Do, does it, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move your adjourn.
I move. All in favor of the adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, me? Five to zero.
This will need to think this time.